All right, are we on Eric? All right. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. And please, as the record will show, all the board members are present. So at this point, please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to ask our CIO Hayes, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Thank you Chair Bass, there are no modifications to the agenda today.
All right, and so different than doing the consent calendar right off the bat, what I would like to do is, we have students here from Eureka High and I'd like to hear their presentation first, so that they can actually share their information to us. And yes, no, they don't need us to graduate, but yeah, they took a long trip here, they have a time limited, limited amount of time. And I'd also like them to be able to be involved in the consent calendar, so I think it'll make it easier if we do their presentation first. So with that, let me give a little heads up first to anyone who's in the audience watching. Because we are hybrid, we do have people that call in to comment. And if you are interested in commenting online, I mean, over the phone, there's a number on the screen, call that number, press star nine to raise your hand as soon as you know you wish to make a comment. There's a time delay and you may lose your opportunity to speak. Turn your volume down on your video feed, because the video is behind what you're going to hear on the phone. So we've had a lot of people not be able to make their comments, because they have not paid attention to that little piece of advice. So just wanted to give everyone that reminder again. So yes, today, we have, well, it's usually been a yearly visit, but we've missed you in person for several, at least this feels like a long time, from Eureka High. And we have Jim Ritter here, who's been here with many different classes. And I think we have Mr. Parker as well, so.
Yeah, Mr. Parker.
Yeah, Mr. Parker as well. But I'm going to just turn this over to Mr. Ritter, and then he can introduce everything as he'd like, and then we'll go forward from there.
Good morning, thank you.
It does, actually, it does have an on button up here that is on. And I'll look at Eric. All right, he's gone.
All right, well, good morning, everybody. It's great to be back. The last time we were here with a group of students was March 3rd, 2020, which was also an election day. So we're excited to be back in person. Thank you Virginia Bass, Supervisor Bass, for visiting with this group of students. As you mentioned, Craig Parker's AP government students from Eureka High School. And they were pleased to host Supervisor Bass for a question and answer session a few weeks ago, and are here today on our All About Civics Exploration Day, which includes presentation to your board, and a visit over at the Elections Office to get a tour of how they handle Election Day operations, and then a visit with Congressman Huffman's staff, and then lunch with Mayor Seaman, pizza lunch with the mayor over at City Hall. So a great day ahead, and we appreciate it. The students have put together a really nice presentation for you. I'm just going to ask you guys to introduce yourselves and just move forward with your presentation. Thank you.
And I will just say, and I don't, if you guys want to clap, that's totally fine. Normally, we refrain from clapping, just because we don't want anyone who's speaking to feel, yeah, how do I say it? How do I say it? Sometimes it's not clapping necessarily, sometimes we have a really raucous audience. Yeah, so sometimes it can intimidate. I'm not that worried about it today, I think you guys are good, but just wanted to, yeah. That's like, you know, if you were to attend a regular wild meeting, you know, we'd probably just say, I know, but, all right, that was just a little housekeeping. It never comes up, except today.
Hi, my name is Peyton Goodman, I'm a senior at Eureka High School.
I'm not sure if that microphone is on. Is it? Okay.
Next year, I'm going to San Diego Mesa College to start working towards my nursing degree. While I'm there, I plan on continuing my soccer career after I earn my, after I earn my associate's degree, I plan on transferring to San Diego State University. There are so many things students can be part of at Eureka High, and I'm proud to be a member of the Black Student Union Club, and Athletic Commissioner, and Student Government, and the captain of several sports teams. In the fall, I'm a centerback for the girls varsity soccer team. One thing I love about playing sports at Eureka High is that we get to spend a lot of time with our teammates to build great friendships. The friendships I've made with my teammates will last a lifetime. I will always remember the nights I spend with my team under the Wednesday Night Lights F, as we put our all into our favorite game. In the winter, I play as a guard on the girls varsity basketball team. We had a very successful season and ended up winning League and Nicolai. Along with this, I play as a second baseman on the girls varsity softball team during the spring. This year, our team has won League, HDN, and we got second in NCS. My time spent on these teams has been amazing, and Eureka High will always be an important part of my life. I am thankful for the memories I have made while being a student here.
Thank you. And can you, can you say your name one more time?
Peyton Goodman.
Peyton, thank you Peyton.
Hello, Board of Supervisors, my name is David Parleone. I am currently a senior at Eureka High School. Throughout my four years, I was able to achieve and learn so much. And not only was I able to maintain a good GPA of a 4.05 while taking a cumulative eight AP classes, but I was also able to do outstanding things in terms of soccer, where I played on the varsity team all four years, playing as a captain for the last two of those. Being a leader on our team, I got a little bit more attention than I was used to, but it brought me out of my comfort zone, which is partly why I'm able to speak before you today. After graduation, I will be attending College of the Siskus in pursuit of playing soccer at a higher level before transferring to a four-year university, where I will major in law and continue playing soccer at a D1 level. Eureka High has always been a school with an amazing atmosphere and amazing people, as it's a very diverse school that aims to help students grow in their own way. This is important for a school our size, as there were students in the senior class alone that I never knew before this year. But we've had all our own diverse, enriching experience at Eureka High. So when I met them, it felt like we'd all experienced such different things, and we all had something to contribute to make a great senior class. Eureka High School has done so much for me, but most importantly, it showed me that stepping out of your comfort zone is the best way to show who we are, and put ourselves out there for the best opportunities the world has for us. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
For your speech?
Yeah.
I think we're ready for the video the students created.
How has your experience at Eureka High impacted your life as a whole?
It's taught me how to work well together with others, and it's introduced me to people that I wouldn't have normally come out with before, friends outside of school.
My experience at Eureka High has definitely made me a more like well-rounded person, like getting to know a lot of different kinds of people, and a lot of different people who have gone through different things, just like makes me more empathetic.
How have your future goals been shaped by your involvement in your club/sport?
My involvement in tennis has made me want to be more active, both physically and socially. Tennis was really fun, and I hope to continue it when I go to college, UC Santa Cruz.
Because I've been involved in orchestra at Eureka High, I am going to participate in the symphony at HSU next year.
Being a first gen student, I think being a part of trios helped me really navigate financially.
We're trying to get the volume up.
And just helping build connections. I think it wasn't easy signing up for classes.
My apologies. So this is our first video we've had, so I need to see if I can turn these TVs down so we can turn one up, is that right? Otherwise, we have, it's going to echo on all of them. Do you want to take? Is that? I apologize, I'll do this really quick. No, no, please, no. This is just a good example of how government definitely, nothing runs perfectly on a good day. Nikki, could, what if you held the mic right up to the computer? Would that help, or would that? Feedback.
I think I wouldn't have gotten into the schools I've gotten to without trio. I think just the friends I made and just helping out my first gen kids, really like me doing.
How does your club represent students like you?
Would you like me to start it over?
Sure. Maybe listen during.
By the way.
How has your experience at Eureka High impacted your life as a whole?
It's taught me how to work well together with others, and it's introduced me to people that I wouldn't have normally come out with before, friends outside of school.
My experience at Eureka High has definitely made me a more like well-rounded person, like getting to know a lot of different kinds of people, and a lot of different people who have gone through different things, just like makes me more empathetic.
How have your future goals been shaped by your involvement in your club/sport?
My involvement in tennis has made me want to be more active, both physically and socially. Tennis was really fun, and I hope to continue it when I go to college, UC Santa Cruz.
Because I've been involved in orchestra at Eureka High, I am going to participate in the symphony at HSU next year.
Being a first gen student, I think being a part of trio has helped me really navigate financially, and just helped me build connections. I think it wasn't easy signing up for classes. I think I wouldn't have gotten into the schools I've gotten to without trio. I think just the friends I made and just helping out my first gen kids, really like me doing.
How does your club represent students like you?
The Latin or still gives a voice to Hispanic and Latin students here at Eureka High.
I feel like cheer helps represent men, like of men in like a different light. It's so that they don't necessarily do super masculine sports, I guess you could say. And it just lets people know that it's okay to do what you want to do, I guess.
What events are you looking forward to after graduating?
My first college soccer game, hopefully in the fall, and then after that, proceeding on, and going to college.
My first football game in the science, in college.
How has participation in your club shaped your view of the world, and how you would want to change it?
My participation in YAP has shown me how there are loads and loads of different communities in the world, and diversity that they have, and it's made me want to spread love to the people and make sure that society accepts them.
Give one word to describe Eureka High as a whole.
We inspire a roller coaster. Diverse.
Rad.
Equitable.
Social.
Roots.
Survival.
Community.
Enriching.
Unpredictable.
Great.
Inclusive.
Live.
Fantastic.
Variety.
Super.
We will clap with that. I would ask. All right, so yeah, I'm very sorry about the sound, but you, now we know something new that we have to work on and figure out, this is what hybrid's all about, is finding out where things aren't quite working. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Hope Crossley. I'm a student at Eureka High School and our senior class secretary. Next year, I will be attending UCLA, where I will be double majoring in Psychology and Child Development. After I finish graduate school, I plan to open a private practice as a therapist for children and adolescents. One of the best things about EHS is that there are countless activities and ways to get involved. Some of my favorite memories come from Student Government and S-Club. During freshman year, I decided to run for class president, and I've continued to serve as an officer each year. In Student Gov, we get to plan and implement events such as Spirit Weeks, Dances, and Orientations. We recently held Powderpuff, which if you're wondering why there were so many people in red jerseys, that was the day of our Powderpuff game in the video. We also had prom and senior picnic. EHS Student Government has helped me gain confidence and grow as a leader. Being an S-Club officer has been another highlight of my time at EHS. S-Club works to empower women through friendship, leadership, and service. Some club projects that we're proud of include a book signing we held for Betty Chin, a panel we hosted with inspirational speakers, and our annual toy luxury drive where we collect hygiene projects to donate to women in need. Eureka High also has great academic programs and staff. Each year, I've been lucky enough to take AP classes where I can dig deeper into new subjects. In these classes, our teachers work to support us by keeping class engaging and providing fun activities. Whether they're reading my salutatorian speech to check for mistakes, or giving me a quiet space to be when I have a migraine, my teachers are always there for me. I hope that this gives you a better idea of what Eureka High is like. We appreciate you taking the time to hear from us today, and for helping us learn more about local civics. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Yeah, that's on Mr. Parker. Good job, Mr. Parker, back there. So, all right, so we, now you've told us some of why you're involved and what you do at school, and generally, what we've done in the past, we've gone around and told you what each of us does, or each office does, and so, is that all right with you? All right. So I think instead of starting with supervisors, I'm actually going to start at this and just go around, and I'm going to put our interim county council, Scott Miles, up first.
Good morning, my name is Scott Miles, and I'm currently the interim county council. The office of county council provides legal advice to the Board of Supervisors, and various other county departments, agencies, boards, commissions, and special districts.
Hi, I'm Alicia Hayes, the county administrative officer. I help the board implement their policies and provide general supervision over county operations, sort of act as the CEO of the organization. My office also develops a half-billion dollar budget for the county, which is our spending plan, and helps to guide policy decisions throughout the fiscal year. It's great to see you all here today.
Hi, I'm Fifth District Supervisor Steve Madrone, and Fifth District is most of northern Humboldt County, very large district. But really encouraging to see you all getting involved in civics and your futures, and, you know, really appreciate these years in high school, because they go fast, and then you're out there in the real world, so to speak, although high school is very real, isn't it? So I just encourage you to listen to all sides of things, and do your best to be a very responsible and engaged citizen. We've got a lot of privileges in this country, and don't take them lightly. It's really important that you guys are getting involved, so thank you.
Well, I saw most of you earlier, my name is Mike Wilson, I'm Third District Supervisor, that's mostly North Bay, Arcata area, so I have the tigers in my neck of the woods, and I have a, one kid's gone through there, and one that's in there now, and I want to say that this presentation today was really awesome, especially the video, even though the audio on our end was a little rough around the edges, but the content was really great, because I just have to say, all of our high schools, and Jim will attest, are just getting better and better. And I just want to say, like, the advancement of the involvement of students, and the issues that you guys are dealing with, and, and just really, I just wanted to say, it just feels really good to see you guys in here, and seeing all of you folks at this age. I want to just encourage you to be, stay involved. I want to also shout out to Jim for, for really encouraging our local students for years to really understand what local governance means in local politics, and how much more important it is that, not more important it is, but more visceral and connected that you are to your actions in your local community. We get so involved in national politics all so often, and we read about it, and we just think about it so much, but in your everyday, if you look around you, everything that you walk through in your environment, including your school, was, came from local elections, and came from involvement of local people in those elections, and so I really encourage you to stay connected in those spaces. So thanks for being here.
And I'm Virginia Bass, I met most of you before. Thank you for having me at the class, it was wonderful. Only one person started raising their hands and asking questions, and by the time I left, it seemed like it was a really good discussion, and really good questions. So I'm the Fourth District Representative, which means basically represent a good portion of the city of Eureka, and Myrtle Town, and across the bridge to the left, in the areas of Samoa, Fairhaven, and Fintown. So I'm really a bit different, several of the supervisors here have very rural districts that are mostly under the county jurisdiction, and mine is very much under this jurisdiction of the city of Eureka. So some of the challenges that my district faces are just, how do I say, understanding that whatever happens in the city of Eureka is under their jurisdiction, and while we can't necessarily influence or change it, I get calls about issues, and so I have to go through the right systems to make sure things get fixed. I'm much easier, my district's only a very small district, maybe 10 square miles, and you'll hear from several of the others, this is a 4,000-plus square mile county, so some of these supervisors travel long distances just to see their constituents, so it's pretty amazing. I think a lot's already been said, but I will echo the part about local government. I've seen a lot, we've all been involved in agencies at the state at one level or another, and we see things that are happening in Sacramento or in DC, and I really think local government is the best, because you actually can do, you can actually do something that makes a difference to people. I see so many things get bogged down in the other levels of government, and when you're in local government, you make, you make things, you make decisions that affect your family, your neighbors, your friends, and you can change, you can change different, you can change lives, sometimes in the, hopefully in the best ways, and unfortunately, sometimes some of our decisions we think about later, and maybe would have done it differently. It's, it's an interesting job, I've been doing it for nearly 22 years, and this is my last six months, so I look at it a little differently now, so. Love to see some of you someday fall in these steps. Supervisor Bone?
How we doing, you guys? I do the other part of Eureka that Supervisor Bass doesn't do, Pine Hill, Lumbar Hills, Cutton, and then I go down to Ferndale, to the edge of Fortuna, and then go out patrol Ya Hone Do, and so, I have the most beautiful district, so, without a doubt, so. I'm on my fourth term, five's my lucky number, so who knows what I'll do. Do a lot of stuff with Eureka High, I think I know a lot of you kids from, when you were a lot smaller, I was one of the founders and built Redwood Fields out in Cutton, and still maintain those to the day, so. A lot of you kids, if you played soccer, if you played, you know, softball, you actually ended up in our old Little League fields and things like that. And congratulations, you guys had a hell of a year this year. You guys, I mean, you guys almost pulled it off, so. And I'd be reluctant if I didn't say, "Good job St. Bernards last night, winning a state championship," so. It's pretty exciting stuff we're up here, but I think there's a lot of lofty goals that people are telling you, you know, reach out, do this, that, and everything else. You guys graduate, what, next week? Go out and have some fun. Do what you want to do. If there's a ring to grab, grab it. You'll fall in, what you want to do will fall into place. You don't have to decide, man, you gotta, I gotta do this, I gotta do this, I gotta do this. Do what feels good for you right now, because real life will hit you soon enough. So enjoy the college experience, enjoy the life experience. Talked to two of my friends this morning that I've known since elementary school, don't give up, and don't forget about your old friends, because those are the ones who are going to be the most important, in my case, 60-some-odd years, 60 years later. But the best thing is, is have fun, and at the end of the day, when you throw your caps in the air, make sure you give your parents an extra special hug, because they've been fighting really hard for you to get to this point, so. You kids are going to do fine. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bishnell, Second District. My district is from Fortuna, out Highway 36 to Trinity Line, down to Southern Humboldt-Medesino County Line, and out to Shelter Cove, edge of the ocean. I have a very rural district, very large, like Supervisor Madrone, and I live, I think my district is the farthest from the county seat, which is here, it's interesting driving. Congratulations on the video, it's amazing, and your speeches, I applaud you guys. One thing that I could say for you all is that each one of you individually count, don't think that you don't. And the real world and being adults, not that bad. You can make it anything you want, just know that your one person can make a difference, and know that all the way through your life, it's so important. And congratulations on graduation.
Thank you. Nikki?
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Nikki Turner, I'm the deputy clerk of the board. And what I do is, as you see, not so successfully all the time, help run the meetings, the technical portion of it didn't work so well today. My department also keeps, are the record keepers for the county. Myself and my team in there, we, we work the agenda, sorry, I don't like public speaking, that's not my forte. We create the agenda, we keep things running smooth, along with our team at the CIO's department. And we talk suddenly, without preparation. So congratulations on your graduation.
All right, and then we will go to Eric also. Not that he wants to, he's, he makes it all happen, just saying, you're sitting up here, sorry. These things just don't show up in people's houses, you know, people in these videos, there's a lot of work that goes into getting it so the public can watch it at home. Am I speaking for you?
Yes.
Oh, that was, okay. My name is Eric, and, all right, well, and they do a wonderful job, sometimes we get here, where are they from? Access Humboldt.
Where are they at?
Behind, yeah, the high school, if you don't know where.
College of Rivers.
What? They're not back, they're not, wait. Whoa, who told, nobody told me.
CR now.
Well, cool, I learned something today. And by the way, when you make a mistake, always admit you made a mistake. I made a mistake. I'm finding out these days, is there not enough people that take responsibility for making mistakes? So I do one at least once a day. So thank you, Eric, I learned something new. Yes.
Well, thank you, I wanted to invite Mr. Parker up, because really, in terms of this conversation about civics, it's our government teachers, our high school government teachers that make that work on a day-to-day basis, and these students really love Mr. Parker, and he's done a great job for a number of years, so Craig Parker, if you could come up and say hi, please.
All right, impromptu speaking. Thank you Board for the opportunity to come and talk to you today. I remember Jim brought up the idea, we kind of previewed the Ferndale when they came, that was right before the COVID hit. And so these students have been working really hard, they're all AP students, which means they've had multiple AP classes, they had, went through this whole AP test period, and they really put it together in a short period of time, just because of the, as you guys remember in your senior, a lot goes on in your senior year, particularly toward the end of your senior year, and so they were able to put that together. I really think the quality of the video and everything, it's really thanks to Lilly Kornstein. Lilly did a fantastic job on putting that together. So one last thing to say, it's just kind of interesting, when these guys were freshmen at Eureka High School, do you remember the power safety, public safety power shut-offs? I mean, these guys came to school in the dark, because the power was off, and last Friday night, they had their prom down at Beaver Casino, and what happened?
The power went off.
The power went off, and so, I don't want to say they're in the dark, but they've survived through the dark, to get, to get where they are. No, but thank you guys for the opportunity today, and thanks Jim for the opportunity, we've got quite a day ahead of us, and so.
People usually don't complain if my mic's not on. Yeah, another mistake, that's two this morning so far. But it was interesting in your class that there are a lot of students who have connections with the county. And in fact, I think Lilly, who's behind, I can't even see her, but I know your mom, I believe you have, yes, works for the county, if I recall, and, and we have one of the students here whose mother is a planning, or parent is a planning commissioner, who may, yeah, he's hidden back there. But, so it's great to have some of these students that actually have an awareness of what is actually happening at the county from the inside. Supervisor Bone?
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if you were around, I don't. Well, I don't know if, I don't know if you were around. I don't, we kind of miss having Girl Scout cookies sold on the front steps of the courthouse, too. So one of them used to sell Girl Scout cookies on the front steps of the courthouse, so.
Oh, yes, I was gonna say, that's like, yeah, your family was like the, the best cookie sellers. I mean, everyone had to buy them. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we're gonna stay till 10:25 and watch the action. And thank you very much. Again, we really appreciate being back in person. And thank you for all of your hard work on behalf of our community.
And we're not quite done yet. What we're going to do is open this up for a public comment on this report. And do we have anyone in the public whose hands are up?
No, Madam Chair, we don't.
All right. So this would be the time, if anyone else in the audience, any audience members, or if any of the students themselves wanted to speak under the three-minute time to tell us anything else, do you think we don't know what we weren't told today? I, well, I see somebody move, coming around. Mary Ann? Okay, she's not a student, but yeah, I started with her. No, yes, we're not, we're still on the UGA High, on the high school present, but you know.
Having taught policy.
So this is Mary Ann Hansen.
Sorry, Mary Ann Hansen, First five Humboldt. But I have a personal comment, which is, I've taught policy classes at HSU for, for many years. And I just want to commend all of you for your work and for coming here. It's, it's intimidating to talk to supervisors and government, folks in, in government and policy. And so I just, I hope that you continue this work. And I just want to congratulate you on your, on your graduation and your fantastic presentation today. So thanks.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right. So I don't see anyone else standing up to speak.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am?
Sorry for the interruption. We do have a hand up, which is 0116, if you want to take them or no.
All right. Generally, since we started with that, but I didn't tell them, and we will, if there's anyone that wishes to comment, who is listening, you should press star nine now so that we know. Right now, we have one hand up. And after this hand, if no one else has their hand up, we will go back to the board. Yes, we'll take that public comment for three minutes.
Hear me?
Yes, welcome, Ash.
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate all the students on, you know, being involved and getting interested in the local government. And also just that, like people said earlier, that, you know, you know, people pay so much attention to national politics, a lot more can be changed at the local level. So it's really good that you're, you're doing it at this point in time. And just think locally and not, not with all the, the global trends, because sometimes they're not, not really focused on what might be best for us. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And I see no other hands up, correct?
Correct.
All right. So go back to the board. Is there a motion to receive and file and accept the presentation?
So received.
Second.
All right. This is just process. So I think we're ready to, do we have the vote key up, or can I just, want to do, just do roll call? Okay. I don't need to be shh, I can't tell. I guess. I don't think there's any problem. We're not going to turn it down, but let's see if our technology works. I didn't. Oh, yay, they passed, 5-0. It was a really good, it was a really good lesson in sometimes, you know, government is messy. And there you go. But it has its purpose. All right. So we're going to move on now to the consent calendar. And no items had been pulled. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve consent.
Second. All right, we have a motion of second. Thank you, students probably downloaded. Did you have the agenda ahead of time? Okay, so I think we're going to go to the people in person first for public comment. If you're wishing to comment on the consent calendar, now's the time to press star nine and raise your hand. If you're interested in speaking on an item that's on the consent calendar and you're in the audience, please do come forward. And I'd say, if you're interested, stand and form a line by the side of the door there, right by where Mary Ann is standing. So, but we've got, Mary Ann is up first, so welcome.
I was coming to get in line and, and then so happy to have been able to speak to their great work. So I just want to, I want to make a very brief comment about the first five Humboldt and County of Humboldt MOU. I want to commend the county administrative officer and office and county council's office for their fantastic work over the last few months in renegotiating that MOU and helping First Five come to a place where we can move fiscal operations under our own supervision, but still maintain our longstanding positive relationship with the county. So just wanted to take a moment to really commend Alicia and county council. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And is there anyone else? Supervisor, Supervisor?
Mary Ann? Thank, thank you for having to put up with everything you had to put up with and still keeping First Five in the forefront in our kids and our family resource centers going and everything you had to work for. Because I know it hasn't been easy. And I think you've, in a very dim room, you have shown very brightly for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. And I shouldn't have, basically, we're not supposed to go back to the board. So I'm, there's mistake number three, but I couldn't stop. He's like a freight train that took off running. So thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else in the audience care to comment on items on the consent calendar? All right. Do we have anyone in the public?
No, we don't.
All right. And I would have said Supervisor Bone, anything else you wanted to add? Or anyone, I know we have a proclamation that needs to be read.
Thank you. I'd like to read this proclamation before we move on. So on the consent calendar, it is in commemoration of an upcoming holiday, which is called Juneteenth. And I want to read this into the record. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States, celebrating the day in history, June 19th, 1865. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves and the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about signing the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and Black and African-American individuals in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and other parts of the nation. And whereas June 19th, a special meaning, or has a special meaning to the Black and African-American community, and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated for over 150 years. And whereas Black history is a part of the United States' history and important to celebrate, we create, as we create safe spaces, representation, inclusion, and empowerment for the Black community in Humboldt County. And whereas this holiday is especially important for Humboldt County, as this community makes up a very small percentage of the population and have and continue to experience various forms of discrimination. And whereas Black Humboldt and the Eureka chapter of the NAACP, NAACP will be hosting an array of Black-curated events Thursday, June 16th, through Monday, June 20th, with their Plaza Party taking place on Sunday. And also, that's also from on June 19th. All events are open to the Humboldt community. Unless specified, it's exclusive. Come celebrate with your Black community. Enjoy food, arts, culture, live music, vendors, and a youth zone. And the year's theme will be honoring Black fathers and the many forms they show up in within our community. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Humboldt Board of Supervisors urges and the recognition of this federal holiday and the significance of this celebration in American history and lineage of those who helped create this country. And with that, we'll vote. Thank you.
All right. Anyone, any other supervisors? I know Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you through the chair. I just want to recognize First Five and Mary Ann and her staff and team that also worked so hard, along with our county administrative and our council, to get this MOU brought forward. I know, Mary Ann, that it's been stressful for you just to get it here on time. And thank you for all your commitment to our young people in Humboldt.
And Supervisor Wilson?
And I just wanted to add on that the Juneteenth celebrations in the last two years have been mostly online. There's been a little bit. And I, I just want to encourage folks to come on down to the Plaza this weekend and check out really what is a joyful and wonderful celebration. And I think it's important that we all do what we can. Thanks. Oh, wait, it's the following weekend. I apologize.
Wait, you made a mistake.
It's a blur. Thank you.
I feel better. Thank you. Any other supervisors have a comment to make? All right. Seeing none. I thought we already voted. And it popped up, but we were still doing commenting. Yeah, I saw it pop up.
I apologize.
It passed 5-0, which is generally what we would hope for the consent calendar.
Can't take it back now.
No, we can't take it back now. All right. So we'll move on to our next item, which is the department reports. And the first one comes to us from Planning and Building. I'm sorry. CEO Hayes?
Yeah, Chair Bass, we have a time set at 10:00, and I'm not sure we'll be able to get through that one. I, I.
Can we get through any of them? I was looking to see, I mean, because we have.
My thought was possibly Director Mattson. Do you think that you can handle your item in 15 minutes?
All right. Sometimes we have to, we have a time set for 10 o'clock, so we're trying to juggle to see what might get done closest to 10 o'clock. But there's no pressure, Tom. Welcome, Director Mattson. And this item is regarding introduction of an ordinance regarding solid waste and source separated materials in our county code. Yes, CEO Hayes?
Sorry, Chair Bass. County Council would like to formally introduce this.
Currently before the board is an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt, repealing Humboldt County Code Sections 521-1 through 521-12 of Chapter 1 of Division 2 of Title V, and replacing it with Sections 521-1 through 521-16 regarding solid waste and source separated materials of the Humboldt County Code.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Director Mattson.
Good morning, Chair Bass, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. It's behoove that we're on the same schedule as our climate action plan, because SB 1383 has been described as the largest climate action bill yet passed by the state of California. This bill requires certain changes in the way we do things with our organic waste. It wants all the organic waste out of the waste stream, as it generates methane, which is a very bad gas for our atmosphere. We can convert it into compost and do many other things with it. SB 1383 requires an enforceable ordinance, which this is what is before you today. There are also several other requirements. One is for landscaping, model landscaping ordinance, and a green building code through planning and building, and also our purchasing codes through our purchasing department, as we will have to be a broker for the, the compost that is generated in the future. Whether we generate it here or not, there are requirements for the county to, to actually be the contractor, to broker compost to our, either to the county or to the private sector. We have to make substantial progress. SB 1383 was initially set to start on January 1st, 2022. Due to COVID, AB 619 was passed, which extended it to January 1st, 2023. There are also monies that were set aside for communities to, to use to implement SB 1383. As a requirement to get those funds, the communities must pass an enforceable ordinance for SB 1383, which is in front of you today. The deadline is for it to be approved on 6/14 at a final reading, if you should, should choose to approve it today. The county has about $92,000 that have been allocated and waiting at the state for us to use. That money is very flexible. It can be used for planning. It can be used for staff time. It can be used to buy compost bins for property owners. It can be used to buy down the cost of compost after it is produced. We are following through in what is called substantial compliance as part of AB 619 and the extension. We have to make substantial compliance, and we will probably be getting a further extension, as we believe we are with the recent action of HWMA to develop a food processing facility at their Hawthorne Transfer Site. It's a big, big move for the, for the entire county. This is not just affecting the county and HWMA. It affects all the cities within the county. And so we have all joined together. We've hired an expert consultant, who so far developed the roadmap for us, helped us develop the ordinance language, and we'll be developing a compliance plan. Some things that are anomalies with the county is SB 1383 requirements are based on census tract populations. Those census tract populations do not conform to our franchise boundaries. So that is something that we are going to have to rectify and come back to the board with. We have census tracts outside of our franchise areas that are going to be required to incorporate SB 1383. And we have areas within our franchises that are exempt from the requirements of SB 1383. So it's a little bit different from the county than it is for cities. For a city, you're the small population, and you can put it off for five years, or you just have to do it immediately. If you may have heard, Ferndale is a small population. They have already published their enforceable ordinance, which they will not be. They're going to take the five years to do collection, but there's a number of other things we have to do in the interim. Even if they get low-population waivers, it does not waive our education requirements and some of the other things that we need to do. And so, so far in the county, the City of Fortuna and Ferndale, and now the County of the Humboldt are the only ones that have broached this topic of enforceable ordinances. But, you know, the cities of Eureka and Arcata and Blue Lake and Trinidad are all working hard and, and moving forward in the development of their ordinances as well. This is, again, an important part of our compliance. When we get down to negotiations with the hauler, I'm sure that you will find out, in the United States, we have something that's called a supply chain problem. And that will probably get us an extension, because we're hearing right now that some of the equipment that is necessary is probably 12 to 18 months out before it will even be able to be acquired by any of our franchise haulers. With that background information, I'm open for any questions. Again, this does not really go into effect until January 1st, 2023. So if we need to make changes, we know we need to make changes to the ordinance already. But if there are further changes that you would like to see, we can always incorporate them. And on final, on closing, I do want to say a big shout out to Department of Health and Human Services, especially Environmental Health Division, the Planning and Building Department, and County Council, who for the last two months, we've all been just, all hands on board to get an ordinance through all of us, because we all have different parts to play in it. And it was, it's a nice feeling to work with a collaborative and cooperating bunch of people that all put the county first. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mattson. Any questions? Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Director Mattson, and all the other county departments that have helped bring this forward. This is a really important element for the county, moving us forward. And as you said, collecting this organic waste, we have a chance to make some fertilizer, rather than hauling it out of the county raw. We can add value to it, and perhaps even mix it with the massive fish waste that's going to come out of the potential Nordic Fish Farm, and, and produce a really high-quality fertilizer product. So if we're going to export something out of the county, let's make sure it's value-added. So I really appreciate those comments. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. And rather than just say approve staff, staff's recommendation, I'm going to read the elements, especially because we have a civics class here today. But it's also nice for the public to know specifically what's being mentioned, rather than just say supporting staff recommendation. In this case, we've already introduced the ordinance by title, and we've waived the first reading. The motion would include setting the ordinance for adoption at least one week away. And it would include directing the clerk of the board to publish the pre-adoption summary of the ordinance, and to post a certified copy of the full text of the proposed ordinance in the office of the clerk of the board. Both publication and posting to be done at least five days prior to the board meeting, at which the ordinance will be adopted. Also, the motion would include directing the clerk of the board, within 15 days after adoption of the ordinance, to publish a post-adoption summary of the ordinance with the names of the supervisors voting for and against the ordinance, and to post in the office of the clerk of the board, a certified copy of the full text of the adopted ordinance and amendments, along with the names of those supervisors voting for and against the ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell, and then Supervisor Bone?
Thank you through the Chair. Director Mattson, how, you had mentioned earlier that there's funding available for private people to help accommodate them with the requirements. How will people access that?
We are going to have to develop the plan for that funding. As I said, that $92,000, it's available for a lot of things. It comes to the county. But there are a number of things on the table that I've already been thinking about, whether it's helping out with environmental health changes. But realistically, the best way to deal with the food waste is A, number one, don't generate it in the first place, or A, number two, compost it at home, so you don't have to cause all of the traffic and all of the trucks and everything else. So I would be, you know, highly recommending we look at at-home composters for the, purchase those for the public. But again, Sonoma County used, they got a lot more money than us, but they use a significant chunk of their money to buy down the cost of compost for the farmers in Sonoma County, so that they could get it at a discounted rate.
Thank you. I also am curious that in, say, the unincorporated areas, my area of Redway, Garberville, more rural, composting, is it going to be allowed in, say, those smaller towns in your backyard?
That would be out of my jurisdiction, basically. But in your jurisdiction, the only place that's going to have this is Fortuna. Everything else is exempt from the collection requirement due to the census tract.
Riodell?
Riodell is a separate city. They're a separate city. They're under the low population waiver for five years.
Okay.
So they, they're involved with us right now, because we're all working together, but they do not have to institute collection for five years.
So that answers my other question, was is it required in the rural, unincorporated areas?
Anywhere that's, it's mostly right around Arcata, Eureka, where our franchise boundaries are. But like I said, there was, there's some anomalies there, where we have census tracts outside of our franchise that are required, and we have to develop a system to figure out how we're going to permit that.
My last question would be, it references to enforcement, and can you tell me what enforcement looks like?
That is one of the items that will be coming back to you with an amendment. Basically, we will be, we already have a program with our hauler for recyclables and green waste, where we have oopsie tags, basically. But SB 1383 does require fines for people that continue, even though we've warned them, we've talked to them, we've told them, you can't put this in this bin. And that, at that point, that's where I would be working with code enforcement. I don't think we're going to have a really huge problem with it, because we're not really having that big of a problem with, while we've got a lot of contamination in our recycling. It's, you know, the oopsie tags, the reminders, the positive reinforcement that our haulers use is pretty good. But now the county's going to have to step in a little bit further on the enforcement end on people who just refuse.
Can I clarify who sets the fine amounts?
That is set by the state of California.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I like oopsie tags. I hadn't heard that before. So we have Supervisors Bone, followed by Wilson, followed by Madron.
Yeah, and so we're, I mean, I've written two letters in the last six weeks for alternative manure production programs for dairy farmers in the valley. So, you know, besides the regular dairy, Alvin and Miranda's are out. So there's monies available, and, you know, soil health and everything else. And I appreciate Supervisor Madron, but I'm reading the whole thing. But I'd like to know, HWMA, I know they've shut off big collection items and recycling down there. Are they looking at an anaerobic digester down there, or what do you, I know you sit on the Board of HWMA, and thank you for that. It's a very important organization. Are you guys putting an anaerobic digester in, or how do you guys plan to handle that part? Through the Chair.
Yes, that's fine. And then, yes, sorry.
Through the Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Bone, and thank you for your years of service on that Board. This has been a very lively discussion at the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, as you can imagine.
For years.
These are big changes, right, for years. And now we're at that point where we have to start considering implementation. We have not gotten to the point where we've determined whether or not we're going to do a digester here locally or not, but that's certainly one of the options that are on the table. In addition, there's a lot of shuffling going on around solid waste management and turning in of large items and things like that. Luckily, Hambro came into Arcata and has opened up and is successfully handling a tremendous amount of CRV. But there are a lot of other elements to this whole puzzle. So we've got a ways to go. There's lively discussions. I can tell you that in regards to the organic waste, which is really what we're here today talking about, there's a strong support on the Board for making sure that those that handle their compost at their home by composting it, that we support that. And we don't end up charging people fees for something they're already doing right, right? Which is the most effective way of doing it. Also, we want to support local businesses, like the Worm Guy, like Full Cycle Recycling and other things that are working already with businesses to collect and compost materials. And then there are those that maybe can't or don't want to be composting, and there will be fees associated with that in order to collect it. But if we can collect it, mix it with fish waste and other things and make a product, that's where we're at. So a lot of details to be figured out still, but this is the first step to make sure that we secure this funding, so that we can use it for good things to incentivize and work with landowners. If you're in an urban setting, these barrels that are contained systems are a really great way to go. But even without that, you can contain varmints and other things by simply screening the top of your pile with heavy metal screens and things. So there's a lot of things that we've learned over the years about how to do this without creating problems in our neighborhoods. So exciting times, really, to be collecting this and doing something with it, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Was that the end of yours? And then I had Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Madron. Did you still want to make a comment? That was it. So how about Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Bushnell? I forgot to say I'm a traffic conductor, basically, up here, trying to do, chairing the meeting, so.
Well, the only constant is change, I would say. And that's really what we're seeing right now, is a pretty big shift in how we're managing our organic waste. On a, and it's not just locally, it's statewide and nationwide, as this, the shift is occurring. And really, a lot of this has already happened in nations across the world, so. And as you said, it takes a team of folks to figure this out, and that transition is, it's going to be bumpy. It's going to be challenging. And I'm just, and going back to a theme of local governance is when, you know, we're getting the good teammates to work to do that, whether it's us up here, whether it's staff, whether it's local electeds at the municipal level, the cities and their staffs. It's, this is really important, and I'm really glad we're doing this, and I support this effort. I think it's never perfect, but it's in the moving in the right direction, and I appreciate that, so I'm fully in support.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the Chair. I wanted to just hit a little bit on what Supervisor Madron said about composting in your backyard. While I'm very supportive of those efforts, I also want to recognize that it can bring varmints and animals in to communities where it's dangerous for them, it's dangerous for people, and that we recognize the appropriate ways to do that in our urban settings, that we don't encourage those types of wildlife to come into cities, that then they're compromised. So it's very important that we think that way in our path forward in the urban settings.
All right, thank you. So at this time, I think we can go to public comment. I know we do have, I see one hand up online. And so I would like to find out if anyone in the audience wants to comment under the public comment portion of this item. Seeing no one in the public wishing to comment, we'll then now go to the folks online. And I believe there's one, and I actually can see the speaker. Is it 0116 confirming? All right. Press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, first, I just wanted to say that, like, I heard the person who was originally introducing the topic, and they were talking about how it was being funded by leftover COVID funding. And just wanted to sign the Board of A. Focus on that, just because, you know, just the state of our economy and, you know, inflation and all that. Yeah, I know it seems like there's all this money out there, but, you know, just spend, spend, spend. Has impact on every, the price of everything going up, you know, spending, sending 40 billion to Ukraine, funding all these new programs, it all results in, you know, higher prices for everything when we're just printing, printing, printing money.
Excuse me, Chair Bass?
Okay, yes, pardon me, Ash. I do believe that our County Council is waving me down. You're kind of off-topic here. This is not about COVID. It's actually about this generation. So you can continue, but just try to keep on.
Okay.
I guess, I'll clear that up and we'll go back.
I was just talking about the spending part of it. But also, I wanted to touch on what Bushnell was saying about, you know, drawing critters in in the, you know, urban areas, because that's a real factor. I mean, I see it here even, you know, just on the outskirts out in Cotten here. People put their trash out early, and it just gets, like, tipped over. So I don't know how exactly we responsibly address that in like, in the middle of town, drawing like, you know, raccoons or even, you know, bears and whatnot in. But something to think about, and also just for people who don't have places to necessarily do it, like, you know, apartment complexes and stuff like that, how are they going to handle? Handle this, I guess, you know, if they have a contained facility. But additionally, like, as far as like a space, if HWMA was going to, like, create their own composting facility, I know Madron was talking about the fish farm, so maybe out in Samoa somewhere, if they could be side by side, that might kind of make sense, just for working together. Okay, thanks. Bye.
All right, thank you. And I see no one else in the public queue. So as I go back, I did want to confirm, I know some, I didn't want to stop the speaker again to confirm, but the COVID, there's no COVID dollars being used on this. Let's make that perfectly clear. I'm not sure where that impression came from.
This is state money through CalRecycle, has no attachments to COVID at all.
Thank you. I think we knew that up there. I just wanted to finish the public comment and then have you confirm that. All right, we have no other members of the public wishing to comment. We do have a motion seconded. We do have the vote tab up. Any final comments before we vote?
Just thank you for, to your staff, Director Mattson, and to Planning and Building, and everybody involved.
All right. With that, we'll vote.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Director Mattson. So at this time, we'll move to our nine o'clock time set, which is actually fairly, I mean, 10 o'clock time set. That's number four. It is the time set, our first time set, and it's coming to us. I know the CAO is going to be introducing this, so we have the CFO here, and it's regarding another challenging financial transactional issue.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bass. Today, staff bring before your Board an approval to adopt three years' worth of our GAN limits. This is a statutory requirement in order to have adopted budget that is constitutionally sound. So Tabitha Miller, our Assistant County Administrative Officer and Chief Financial Officer, will present that. But quickly before she does, I just want to give Tabitha some props. She's been doing many, many people's jobs and working a whole lot of overtime and weekends and nights and making sure to keep our organization as financially sound as possible in these trying times. So thank you, Tabitha. And I'll get off my soapbox.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning. I'm going to go ahead and pull up a quick PowerPoint presentation, and I know you're constrained on time today, so I'll move quickly, hopefully.
Our technology is in transition as well.
It's one of those days.
It really is.
Oops. Okay, there we go. So as the, as the CAO mentioned, we are asking you to actually approve three years appropriation limits. It's sometimes also referred to as the GAN's limit, because of the gentleman who helped move this forward, or the expenditure limitation. But we're looking at fiscal year 2019, '20, fiscal year 2021, and fiscal year 21, '22. This is, it's a fairly straightforward calculation. You take the previous years, so it builds on every prior year, previous year's appropriation limit, and it's adjusted for an inflation factor and change in population. And I'll get a little bit more into detail on how that works a couple slides forward. And just sort of a point of where we start is the fiscal year 1986, '87. Move forward slide. And part of the reason for this is that there is a little bit of legislative history behind the appropriations limit. So it was originally approved by the voters in November of 1979 as Proposition 4, and it was added at that time to our state constitution. So it is a constitutional requirement for Article 13B. Something interesting, I've worked in a number of other states here on the, in the western part of the United States, and each one of them had a version of the appropriation limit. So it is something that's been copied by many states and sort of is fairly common in government. In 1980, the legislature actually added additional legislation supporting this requirement, and it starts with the California Government Code, Section 7900. And then in 1990, it was also updated again with Proposition 11. And that's where the year changed from 1978, '79 as the base year to '86, '87. And Proposition 11 also expanded the options for local and state governments to select their inflationary factor and also how they calculate the change in population. So this is a summary of the calculations, and I know if you looked through your packet, there were details on how these calculations were put together and where the numbers came from. But as you can see, starting on the left-hand side, you've got your fiscal year. You've got your starting point, which is your prior year limit. And you can see, if you look over at the new limit on the right-hand side, those just roll forward. And the adjustment factor, again, is two items. It's an inflationary factor, and it's a change in population. And we have about six different ways to calculate this because of the changes with Proposition 111. So the first one is the cost of living or the inflation factor. And the state does provide, the State Department of Finance provides an annual calculation for us, which is based on the change in per capita personal income. And just as an example here, for 1920, that happened to be 3.85% increase over the prior year. And then there's a population change factor that's taken into account in that adjustment factor. And there are also three ways that we can get to that number. It can be the change in the county population from one year to the next. It can be the change in the county's incorporated cities from one year to the next. Or we can also use the change in population for our county along with all of the counties that share a border with us. It happens that for the adjustment factor for these three years, the change in per capita personal income from the state gave us the best or the highest number. And unfortunately, all three of those population factors were a negative. We didn't increase in this part of the state. We actually decreased. But the one that was most advantageous to us was hooking ourselves to the counties that were, that share a contiguous border with us. So that actually brings the factor down just slightly. You can see the new limit there. The positive is that every year it goes up and gives us more of a buffer. But moving to the far right-hand side, the appropriations or the revenues that are subject to the limit, you'll see that there's a pretty significant difference, not only between what the limit is and what's subject to it, but also our budget as a total. As I heard the CAO mention earlier today, we have approximately a $500 million budget, and that number's quite a bit less. It's specific to essentially general fund taxes. So it's those taxes that are not allocated or specified for specific uses. And then there's a few exceptions if you went through the details that are allowed. So the nice thing is that we have a long ways to go before we hit the limit, and that's pretty standard for most of the jurisdictions that I've seen in California. Just a quick final update on sort of where we're at. It is a legal requirement. The last time it was done was in fiscal year 1819. It is a component of the reports required by the State Controller's Office, so it is important. It's a number that's, that has to be included in the adopted budgets that we submit annually in December, the financial transaction report that's due in late January, and it was noted in the lawsuit that was filed against the county and the auditor controller recently. Going forward, so that we don't end up in a situation where we're doing multiple years, we're going to incorporate it into the budget process. So when the CAO brings forward their recommended budget that is required to be adopted before June 30th of each year, June 30th of each year, this will be included in it. So you'll see the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget incorporated into that process, just so that we get it as part of the workflow and meet the requirements. And with that, I'm willing to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Any board members have a question? Supervisor Bushnell?
So I don't remember doing this last year, obviously, but is it, do we do it every three years?
No, you do it every year. We just haven't done it for three years, four years.
Well, I haven't been here, so.
I haven't either.
Okay, so it wasn't done, and we're catching it up?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, good presentation. For me, and I suspect for a lot of other people, what is appropriations? You know, just in a general sense. I mean, we've got a budget. I think it was stated it's about a half a billion dollars, but some portion of that is appropriation. So can you explain what appropriations are?
So that's a really good point. So appropriations are essentially your expenditure budget, so it's what you are setting as what you are going to spend. It's your spending plan for the next year. So it's essentially what you are budgeting to cover all costs of county business.
So if it's 200 and some million here, but our budget's 500 million, what's the difference?
So it doesn't include, again, it doesn't include your special revenues, which is much of the county budget.
All the grant funds.
The grant funds, a lot of the funding that we get from the state for DHHS, for example, Department of Health and Human Services. It's not going to include anything that you get from outside grant activities, and it's not going to include your enterprise funds, which for us happens to be our airport and then some of our internal service funds.
Well, that's great. So basically, the general fund plus.
It is.
So to speak, right?
Exactly.
And in terms of civics, you know, the way the government works, especially at the federal level or even the state level, there can be a law that gets passed that says, this will happen. But then there has to be an appropriations bill that passes as well to actually fund the action by Congress, for instance. So appropriations is a very interesting element of government and something to look into if you decide to go into government more, so.
I would add to that.
Talk into your audience behind you.
And I'm going to talk to the audience behind me, too, which is, I think that's an important point, which is we don't always pay attention to the budget side of things, but it is how we do everything. Because if you don't have the money, you can't spend it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Wilson?
I would add to that, budgets are moral documents as well, meaning they set forth your agenda and where you've put your resources and what you're going to do with it. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three attached resolutions establishing fiscal year 2019, '20 to 2020, fiscal year 2020 to 2021, and fiscal year 2021 to '22 appropriation limits in accordance with Article 8B of the California Constitution and Division 9 of Title I of the California Government Code.
Second?
I'm going to second. Also, I want to recognize the extra work that Tabitha's been doing, and thank you for every detail that you bring forward to us.
All right. Supervisor Bone?
She has been here every Saturday and Sunday that I've been here, which is the last six or eight. So I know she's working on bank reconciliations and a lot of things and things that just haven't got done. So thank you for moving this forward so we can actually operate this county as we're supposed to.
All right, thank you. We will go to public comment. Nikki, no one's on the line, okay? No one's had their hand up there, so we will not go back to those on the phone. We will go to those in the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wished to comment on this item? All right, apparently not. We'll go back to the board. Any last-minute comments? Are we ready to vote? All right. We'll just proceed to vote, and we've got good timing, so you guys can probably circulate out when we're done. All right, past 5:0, and I suggest we take a five-minute break. Actually, we have a closed session item. You know, stay for just a moment. You get to see this part, but it'll take less than three minutes, right? About to get this next piece over, because we are moving into multiple time set items.
Correct, Chair Bass, yes.
Which county council do we bring in for which item?
County Council Miles will come in and read in all of the closed session items, which is typically what we would do when we break.
And before he does, would you like to explain, CAO Hayes, what we actually can do in closed item, in closed session? It's not like we go in and have talking about everything we kind of want to do, though that would be really fun, probably. But there's real specific reasons, and I would like either you or the county council to share that.
Sure. Closed session is an opportunity for the board to speak privately in terms of items that might be involving litigation. Oftentimes, if they are looking to procure properties, they would have these conversations behind closed doors. Personnel matters on our calendar today as Planning and Building Director and County Council positions. So it's a bit of when they do their strategizing and limiting liability for the organization, and there's a small portion of topics that they can legally discuss behind closed doors. And then oftentimes, we'll report out to the public some minimal details on what has occurred in those discussions. And County Council Miles, do you have anything to add to that?
No, not other than the fact that the subject areas in which the board can discuss in closed session are set forth in the California Government Code, specifically the section known as the Brown Act.
All right, thank you. So would you like to brief us on what we're going to be talking about in closed session? Interim County Council Miles?
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957 in order to consider public employee appointment for the positions of the Director of Planning and Building and County Council. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Shawn L. Perro versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2200313; Eric James Adams versus Honorato Alguin Quisp et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2200236; White Circle Commerce LLC et al. versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Numbers CV2000513 and CV200623; Beverly Elaine Steichen versus Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2101594; and People of the State of California et al. versus Karen Paz Dominguez et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2200584. Finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54956.9D2 and E3 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case regarding the final environmental impact report for the North McKay Ranch subdivision project.
Thank you. I just realized, mistake number five, and you guys, we are accomplices. It's not exactly 10:30 when we read those into the record. So should we let the students leave so at least they know that process and come back and take the public comment on that at 10:30 and then go into closed session?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. There are so many rules. It's really easy to, you know, kind of trip on them. Yes, Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to clarify something for the students and what they just witnessed here, because we have the time in just a moment, which is the Brown Act, which is a really important piece of legislation that regulates how we do our meetings. And what that is, it's basically the California law that requires that we can't talk about things unless we're on the dais together and in public, at least a majority of us. So no more than three of us can get together, so two of us can talk about certain subjects. And even then, we can only talk about subjects that are on this agenda. And even if we talk about it in closed session, which are items that the state has, through that law, has determined that, you know, having those discussions in confidence is in the best interests of the public, we still need to only talk about those subject matters while we're in the closed session, and that's why they're listed out that way, so that we don't stray and talk about other things necessarily, so that we're reminded that these are the things we're talking about today. And with same thing with the agenda. So that's the context of this, is that what was happening in the past and has happened is that people would get together and make decisions before they even came to these meetings and work on those. And so this law was basically to help us be more transparent in these conversations and have those in front of the public. That's why it's there. It's an important law, and we are reminded of it often.
I do believe when I spoke to the class, I tried to explain how challenging it does make it. So it's 10:25. Thank you for being here today. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. We'll graduate. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody.
And County Council has assured me that since we've already read the items, it is perfectly fine to just take the comments at this point. So if you are wishing to comment on items that are on our closed session, this is the time. We have one person in the public audience. Thank you for coming and seeing us today. Welcome.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. Part of me wishes that you would allow three minutes for each agenda item, because it's really, I could speak for probably about 20 on two specific items, but I know that your time is valuable. First off, on the appointment of the Planning Director, I think it would be very, very important for you as a board to look at what's been going on for the last eight to 12 months. Look at how policy, in my perspective, has been changed and continually changed from people other than the Board of Supervisors. The way I understand government is the Board of Supervisors sets policy, and the different governing bodies below the Board of Supervisors runs with that, and they don't set policy on the fly. I would ask you to look at all the different comments that have taken place in the turn of events as far as different projects moving forward. I know about July of last year, things were moving really, really smoothly. We are getting through, I think between the Zoning Administrator and Planning Commission, they're getting through about 20 projects every two weeks, and then all of a sudden, a bunch of public comment and a bunch of policy changes, from my perspective. I could be totally wrong. I'm speaking as an individual and not as any commissioner or anything like that. A lot of policy changes, and then it slowed down to about five, maybe 10, projects every two weeks. With that same time, there is, from my perspective, a lot of, what I would perceive as tension between people of the public, people of different bodies, and staff, and lack of respect, complete lack of respect for staff. So I would ask you, I don't know if the current director would give you an exit interview, but I would beg you to do an exit interview. I'd also beg you to listen to K-Mud and hear the little soundbite clips of the different engagements that have happened at different meetings. And I'd beg you, I mean, if you respect my opinion, I'd ask you to listen to the four-minute video or interview that I did. It was about 15, 20 minutes chopped down to about four minutes. There's a lot of importance about community and government working together to regulate an unregulated industry. You had a director that has gotten through, came with one set of rules, gotten through a second ordinance through SEQA, left that first set of rules alone, been implemented with code enforcement and all those kinds of things to mitigate the negative things. And I think it's the board also needs to take responsibility for those policies. And lastly, on another thing, the auditor controller, thank God today's election day. I pray to God the election goes a certain way. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Thomas. And I see no one else making public comments, so we will go into closed session. What? Oh, there's. I'm sorry, what? Okay, because I thought I'd ask when it began. Okay. Okay, why don't you call on the one that there is? And if you're interested in commenting on an item, press star 9 to raise your hand now, or we will not know you're there. What number is it?
1041.
Okay, if you're 1041, press, welcome.
You mean?
Yes, welcome.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused. Is this a time to comment on Item H, department reports?
No, actually, this is, we're going into closed session, which is the litigation and personnel. We will be back. We have a time. And how long, I would ask, how long, but do we think we'll be back? Do you think I should just say 1:30 is when we will come back? We have a lot of sessions. So that will happen after 1:30.
Okay, after 1:30.
Okay, thanks, Donnie. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, so then we will go into closed session. Thanks for letting us be a couple minutes late. We've got a really very short lunch break. Before we get started on items not on the agenda, I will ask for a report out of closed session. Oh, do you want to do them all at the very end?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we didn't get through them all. Okay, we'll come back to that. All right, so do you want to give a little heads up before we go to public comment on items not on the agenda? If you happen to be watching at home and you wish to make comment, please call in and press star 9 now, and turn your volume off on your phone, or we won't know your, not on your phone, turn your volume off on your video feed so that we know that you're there and there's no time delay. So with that, I also wanted, we had, wanted to make some things clear about public comment, especially on non-agenda items. Recently, there was a public comment that regarded doing violence, acts of violence, and we just want to say anything that comes close to even intimating that will be stopped as soon as this board recognizes, and with the county council. So I just want to ask people to be respectful and especially mindful at a time when things are very, the world is kind of an upside-down place at times right now. And then also, did want to say, we'll go to those who signed the sign-up sheet first to make public comment, then we'll go to the rest in the audience, but before we go to those on the phone. And we'll also say we have all received a copy, and this hard copy that we received will be also attached to our minutes. Is that correct? Yes, that's correct, so that it will be in the final, it'll be in the actual record. So with that, we do have several people signed up for public comment who are in the audience. It's nice to have some people in the audience. So the first one today is Thomas Mulder. And just a reminder is, there's a three-minute time limit, and Thomas will be followed up by Garth Sundberg and then Robert Hempstead.
Good afternoon. Thomas Mulder here. Not going to touch in on what I commented on earlier, because I'm not going to tie it into that agenda item. I see, obviously, you haven't reported out yet, so that's a tough decision. Big shoes to fill, I will say that. So back to policy. I spoke, I don't know, whenever I took my LTO class about two months ago, about energy issues. And you have a set of rules in place, Ordinance 1.0, that allows generator use on cultivation activities related to cannabis, as long as it's permitted. And there's been this policy shift that's taken place the last eight months that's requiring all these projects to go to PG&E or renewable energy, which is the requirements of Ordinance 2.0. And if you remember, through the development of Ordinance 2.0, there was no added conditions onto Ordinance 1.0, except for the unintended consequences of the sphere of influence area. So I think that's really big when you think on a policy standard that...
your name, stand beside the room so it's a little faster moving queue. So we do have, we have Garth Sundberg, followed by Robert Hempstead. And Robert, if you wanted to stand to the side of the room. And following Robert will be Jackie Hostler-Carmazan. I never say the name right.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. You have three minutes.
I'm here today to confirm equal rights and status of federal-recognized tribes. And please accept the letter that you guys got today and equal standing as per federal law and presidents. And I'm also here today to make sure you're aware of Supervisor recent, Madrona's recent ongoing words and actions discriminatory to Trinidad Rancheria and all the rancherias basically in California. At a Caltrans project development team meeting on our freeway project, Supervisor Madrona made statements that rancherias do not have the same standing as ancestral territory as regular tribes. He said, "Just ask the Yurok tribe." So he threw all the tribes in California under the bus. We are tired of Supervisor Madrona discriminating against Trinidad Rancheria and our projects, sending out the wrong messages based on hearsay. We are also asked Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to appoint a representative to our freeway access project department, development team that will represent the board and be fair and unbiased in their recommendations and comments. So, anyway, thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Garth. Robert, welcome. Following Robert will be Jackie, and then following Jackie will be Marcus. Welcome.
Robert Hempstead, Vice Chairman, Trinidad Rancheria. Appreciate you guys' time. So looking back, I've been involved on tribal council since Supervisor Madrona has been elected. Um, I appreciate a lot of his cleanup, community efforts, willing to work with the community. What I'd never seen was, I never felt like he ever reached out to the rancheria. I've never had him show up to a meeting and ask, uh, what we could do to partner. We have numerous departments. Health Human Services works with, our Social Services works with Health Human Services. Our Transportation has Partner of Public Works. We've had Environmental Health, you know, we do numerous jobs. And the statements that were made in that Caltrans meeting were that, uh, you know, the rancherias, they are not equivalent to a tribe, right? Well, that's, a tribe is federally recognized. A rancheria is federally recognized. They are equal, they are seen as equals, and that needs to be recognized. What I would like to see moving forward, or in hopes, is that he would go to the rancheria as part of his constituents in his area, right? I mean, that's what I hear. I hear it's constituent. I represent my constituents, but I haven't ever had him reach out and say, "Hey, can we work together?" We are his constituents still, right? He's still here to represent us. I think it should be equal, and I would like to move forward. But I think that, uh, it really does need to be recognized. The rancheria holds the same sovereign respect and immunity here that tribes get, and that needs to be recognized. And for someone that speaks for the board of supervisors, represents all of you guys, that, uh, that doesn't really work that well when a county elected position goes and says that, "Hey, you guys are lesser than, and there's no equality here," even though it's proven. So, um, I would appreciate moving forward with the board of supervisors and the county in a positive manner. And, uh, instead of maybe dropping the, stopping the negative comments and maybe trying to work with us, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Robert. And our next speaker is Jackie. Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Bass and Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to reiterate Trinidad Rancheria's serious concerns about the continued misinformation and negative campaign that Madrona has launched against the tribe. As per our vice chair, I was also part of the meeting on March 29th, where Madrona asserted to our consultant that Trinidad Rancheria has no ancestral territory and that everyone knows this. They are not a real tribe. Just ask the Yurok tribe. Caltrans officials were appalled and cut him off mid-sentence and tried to regain control of the meeting. Frankly, it was embarrassing, and it showed his ignorance of the legal standing of all federally-recognized tribes, as per our letter, which states case law and cites precedents that are proven and time-tested. Madrona has worked tirelessly to falsely portray the rancheria as an entity that does not take into account the negative environmental effects of our projects. He has indicated the tribe's rights were not open-ended, whether on sovereign land or not. While we are not here to defend ourselves today, it is important to underscore how hard the tribe has worked to ensure environmental stewardship and mitigate impacts from our projects. He says he supports responsible development. Who is he to say we are not being responsible? He leads his constituents to believe we are destroying the land and its resources. Trinidad Rancheria has a proven track record of cleaning up hazardous waste, rebuilding the pier, creating a state-of-the-art treatment plant, and stormwater mitigation projects. We have lived up to our commitments. Regarding our freeway interchange project, he has called it a project to benefit the casino and has lobbied the CTC and HCOG, saying they should have conducted more inclusive planning. He is also opposing our Humboldt Bay waterline project, spreading the fear that it will induce more development. He, it is clear he's going after every infrastructure project we have initiated, and it's his mission. We asked the board today to remove Supervisor Madrona from the Caltrans project development team and reappoint a supervisor who will be unbiased and look at our project objectively. We also asked the board to review their support of our freeway access project, which is on record from 2008. Lastly, we respectfully request the board reject the argument that there is a second class of federally-recognized tribes. Trinidad Rancheria is a federally-recognized tribe. We are responsible to the Creator and our tribal members to be good stewards of our land.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. And we do have the letter that we can have, and it is definitely in the record. All right. Marcus, followed by Vivian. Welcome, Marcus.
Thank you.
And there's a three-minute, it's a strict three-minute period, just so.
Okay. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Marcus McCray. I am, I'm the Regional Director at SEIU Local 2015.
Hold on, Marcus, we'll let you, we'll let you start over. Um, we're not, we're doing the, folks, there's a little concern on the side about public comment. We're doing the folks who've actually signed up first, so we'll get over there. I know, I know Vivian, they were having conversations, Charles and Genevieve were in line. Okay, Marcus, please start.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Marcus McCray. I am the Regional Director at SEIU Local 2015. Uh, we represent IHSS and skilled nursing home workers in Humboldt County. Um, I want to briefly tell you a personal story. Uh, recently, my family lost our beloved grandmother, Minnie McCray, to kidney failure. The loss has been very difficult to us, but we also have to remind ourselves about the blessings that we have. Many of those blessings came because she had a loving, devoted IHSS caregiver who was at her side day after day and night after night, through every terrifying run to the emergency room, through every bad reaction to medication, through every bathroom mistake. I believe that this wonderful woman only really got to rest after my grandmother passed away, um, and closed her eyes for the last time, but because of her timeless work, my grandmother lived to see 93. This is a special story, but it's not a unique story. There are 1,000 IHSS caregivers in Humboldt County who give the same love, passion, and concern to their consumers. And there aren't really secrets or surprises in what we need to do to make sure seniors and people with disabilities can live long and full lives. We need to give them the opportunity to live safely in their homes and be fully, be full participants of the community. We need to invest in the medical care teams that care for vulnerable members of our communities, the doctors, nurses, but also the home care workers that are doing the day-to-day work on the ground to give everyone their best shot at living their best lives. The contract negotiations that we have just started are an opportunity to change real issues that we're facing in Humboldt County in the IHSS program. Uh, when I say real issues, what I mean is, even in the face of the pandemic, Humboldt County was one of the last counties in the state to give personal protective equipment to providers. Uh, that's, that's to keep themselves safe and also the people that they take care of safe, at 50 cents above the minimum wage. Caregivers in Humboldt County also have the lowest negotiated IHSS wage in the state, except for two other counties. We believe that we can do better than that, and we're hopeful that we have a partner in the county to be able to do that. Let's lift wages, so the value of the work, so the value that this work has on the community is reflected in what caregivers receive, so providers are not worried about putting food on the table if they take their consumer to the hospital at $7 gas, so caregivers can and, can have and pay for their own healthcare insurance. Let's raise wages so workers don't leave this industry and provide PPE and medical training for the first time in this county. Let's do it with urgency, because lives are depending on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marcus. Welcome, Vivian. And following Vivian will be Antoinette.
Hello. Greetings, Supervisors. Good to see your faces live, too. Uh, my name is Vivian Denniston. I reside in District Four. Um, I've been an IHSS provider for over 20 years, and I'm a proud Regional Vice President of my union, SEIU Local 2015. Our union represents over 4,000, 400,000 IHSS providers, nursing home workers, and private agency workers in California. We are the biggest union west of the Mississippi. Um, and as you know, we are negotiating our contract now, so I am speaking on, not just for myself, but on behalf of all the IHSS workers that could not be here today, to tell you that they have worked as essential workers through the entire pandemic. Um, I got no phone calls saying, "I'm not going to work today. Can somebody else do it for me?" They went anyway, because they knew if they weren't there, um, their consumer wouldn't have a meal or a bath, um, or go out to get food. They are essential. They're not paid like essential, but they were critical during COVID. And often, as Marcus said, um, we worked without, um, the proper PPEs. Um, I did get lots of calls about that. People worried, afraid for themselves, afraid for their consumers. And, um, so I hope you do realize that we are essential workers. Uh, we need to be paid what we deserve, and that comes with giving them the respect that they deserve. And you know there is a huge shortage of workers. Um, instead of the numbers going up, the numbers are going down, and more people are turning 60 every day. So this, this is crucial, that, um, this job is recognized for what it is. People are paid what they, what they deserve, so more people will be attracted to this kind of work or to stay with it, continue on. Because, um, honestly, I'm a senior. I'm not going to do this forever. And there are a lot of us sitting out here today that are seniors that are continuing to do it because we can't find anybody else to do it for us. Too much of a shortage, so please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. So we've got Antoinette, followed by Daryl, followed by Mona Lisa.
God, I love her name.
Hi, Ma.
Totally. Uh, my name's Antoinette Skiles, and I am the elected chair of SEIU Local 2015. I've been working within a part of the union since 2012, so, and I've been working for IHSS for almost 30 years. So I'm beginning to learn how everything works. And I spend, we spend a lot of time up in Sacramento, so talking to everybody up there to give them an insight of all that we do. Not to say, you know, I, by the grace of God, my angel was Mary Beth Wolford, and I'm able to sustain a living place to live because of her before she left this world. Because I don't know what I would do if I had to pay $800, $1,000 rent for myself. So I know other people that are looking for housing have a hard time looking for housing because they have to have three times their income. I don't know my math very well, but you go ahead and calculate the 1550 that we just started getting. And to, I know we only get paid twice a month, and I'm supposed to have three times that for anybody to accept me. That's not acceptable, period. You know, I also work for individuals that work, that live in, in housing, subsidized housing, and they get to stay there for a third of what their income, what their social security is. So that should work on the other end of the scope, because I've worked for a lot of people with money, without money, and in between. And I will tell you right now, I feel bad for those that make a lot of money, because when they go look for care, they can't find it. They can't get it. I know people that have toward their end of their, taking care of their bedroom wives, have to actually divorce them in order to get help prior to their leaving this world. So it isn't all that. It wasn't, like I said, it isn't the time, it isn't the crunch, it isn't the COVID. It's Humboldt County. I've lived here long enough. I've raised my kids here. And, you know, I was, I would say, I was born, it's not a joke, but I always say I was missing a couple chromosomes, that I didn't have the ability to learn. Like, I made my children make sure they got an education. I spent junior high, high school with my kids in school to make sure they got their education, to make sure that they didn't have to do hard labor, sweat labor. And, but this is what I'm good at, and this is what I love. I enjoy doing it. So I want you all to think about what's going to happen when you get older, and how much money do you have banked up to take care of yourself. It is a thought that everybody needs to take into consideration if your kids aren't willing to take care of you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we do have a signup list, so I, there was some shuffle there, but we've got several people waiting, so I'm trying, I'm, we do have.
I think they pushed me to the front.
Well, we also.
Do you want me to sign up?
Um, no, the signups, we just want to get the ones that are on the signup first. We have Daryl and then Mona Lisa.
Oh, I didn't know there was a signup.
That's right. Right. We'll just, Daryl and Mona Lisa come on up and.
I'm Mona Lisa.
She, he has a tiny issue. He's up to you there. I just have someone to see.
Mona Lisa, go.
Okay.
Yeah. Not everyone has to take three minutes if they don't want, so, welcome.
Hi. My name is Mona Lisa, and I was just wondering about, um, the, about, is there a possible way that we could possibly get, um, insurance, like, down the road to, to help us be able to, to stay well and healthy, so we could take care of our, the people that we're, that we are taking care of? I mean, health-wise, you know? And, um, is there a possible way that we could possibly get, like, something like a purse-type thing that we could possibly, um, put money toward it, you know, the individuals? That way...
So I'm trying, we do have.
I think they pushed me to the front.
Well, we also.
Do you want me to sign up?
No, the sign-ups, we just want to get the ones that are on the sign-up first. We have Darryl and then Mona Lisa.
Oh, I didn't know there was a sign-up.
That's right, right. We'll just, Darryl and Mona Lisa come on up and.
I'm Mona Lisa.
She have a tiny issue. He's up to you then. I just have someone to see.
Mona Lisa, go.
Yeah. Not everyone has to take three minutes if they don't want. So, welcome.
Hi. My name is Mona Lisa, and I was just wondering about the, about, is there a possible way that we could possibly get insurance, like down the road, to, to help us be able to stay well and healthy? So we could take care of our, the people that we're, that we are taken care of? I mean, health-wise, you know? And is there a possible way that we could possibly get, like something like a purse-type thing that we could possibly put money toward it? You know, the individuals? That way, we could have something to go by down the road. I have an autistic son, and he is my love. I mean, and I think it's really, really important for, for everybody to be able to have that backup. And that's all I wanted to let you guys know. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here. Now, we did have Darryl signed up. Darryl, are you ceding your seat to the first person in line? And I don't know who Darryl is. Maybe Darryl left the building. All right, well, we'll go to those who are standing at the side. Looks like we have Kathleen Bryson.
Hi. I just wandered in. I wore purple for a different reason today. But this is a subject near and dear. This is a labor of love for these people. When I saw their purple across the road from my office, I got excited because it's a labor of love for them, and it's, should be a labor of love for every single person in this room and in this county. And what it is, is we're looking after the elderly. But they're not just doing that. They're looking at people who have, are elders, people who have put their time in in Humboldt, or maybe they've come later because this is a good retirement community. My sister Maggie Kraft runs Area One Agency for Aging. I would encourage you to consult with her because she knows more than anyone. She came over here in the 80s to be an spokesman. She has devoted her master's in social work to the elderly. I would ask that you consult with her. But yes, listen to these lovely people in purple. Because, and so many people are so sick of it, but I'm going to say it. The rich get richer and the poor get poorer. I'm a rich person comparatively. I'm blessed. I'm able to make a living fighting for the rights of others. Not everything has to have a bottom line that brings us wealth. But I'll tell you what, it does. Because this county is a business like everything else. Some things you can't quantify in money, like the love of a person who looks after those that can't look after themselves. But yes, this is a business. The county's a business. And more and more during this election season, Mr. Bone, I see you. I see you. I see all of you. We need someone who can control our money and look after our money, and I want you all to do it. But these people need money. Why? Are they also looking after the mentally ill? And who are the mentally ill? Well, 98% of us have mental health conditions. So 98% of us, so it's a condition, not an illness. 98% of us have some sort of mental health condition. That means the 2% are lying. 100% of us have mental health issues just by being on a planet that is so far from the garden that the food we eat makes us sick and it affects our brain. So look after purple because bottom line says we have to. Well, you're just going to treat the symptoms fine, but be smart. All of you are smart, and you're smart if you look after purple.
Thank you, Kathleen. And thank you for the hand-waving and not clapping. Welcome. Looks like we have Charles. If anyone's interested in speaking on non-agenda items, you can definitely get to the side of the room. We do have three. We have Charles, followed by Genevieve. And I see Sandy back there, too.
Hi. My name is Charles Wilson. Seventy years ago, I volunteered for the Army. I'm supposed to go out there and shoot a bunch of people. But it was three years before I even got a chance to vote on who those people were that told me to shoot people. I appreciate these guys. This is Military Appreciation Month or something like that. And I, I always remember this one incident. It was also a long time ago where the government really didn't appreciate anybody that fought for them. On June 8th, 1967, that's 55 years ago. I don't know if it's older than most of you there. The USS Liberty was loafing along off of Israel. It was a surveillance ship, listening to all the military, what they're doing over there. Essentially, Israel was planning on breaking their truce that they had agreed to, to attack the Golan Heights in Syria. So anyway, Israel didn't care for that. They had, well, the USS Liberty was, had American flag flying, had Americans or English script on the, numbers on the bow. Didn't have any Arabic script or anything like that on it. It had USS Liberty painted on it. And it was clear, it was clear day. It's clearly an American ship. Two separate Israeli torpedo boats. The radar guys are trained to figure out how fast a car, a boat is going. And they calculated it was going at 30 knots. That meant that it was a warship. So they decided, Israel decided to attack this ship, which was keeping track of what they're doing. So they sent the two torpedo boats out there, a couple of aircraft. They dropped 1,000-pound bombs on the ship. They dropped napalm. They torpedoed, fired five torpedoes at the ship, and they killed 34 sailors, 171 wounded out of, I think it was 204 people. And it just shows your appreciation of government sometimes and why you don't always want to trust government because they'll do you in.
Thank you, Charles. And Genevieve, before you start, I just want to let people know if you're watching and you want to, if you want to call in from home, you should already done so now. But if you haven't, call in, press star nine. And then I also want to remind folks we're on general public comment, and we will be having the Climate Action Plan. It will be our next item. So I just want people to know what they're speaking about. Your public comment on non-agenda items.
Are you, are you speaking to me for any?
No, I was speaking to the audience and people on there. I just said, "Wait, so I can let you talk now." So I was just giving a heads up to people.
I just bump into things. Like the other day, I bump into somebody funeral. I go in there to say something. But right now, I really, I'm a nurse myself, 45 years, because I always say, how many times we have to take care of our children for, our parent for 18-year? We don't. The children doesn't have to take care of us for 18-year. We take care of our children. So no place like home. It will be nice, it's easier to take care of these people if they have somebody to help them at home and seriously. And hopefully, we don't have a vaccine mandate for anybody like that because we have to respect our natural immunity. I go back to the same old thing. Because so many people get hurt from the shot, whatever the shot. If you like it, take it. But don't without respect of our, what you call it, natural immunity. Right now, I want you to, not to, I just found out what you call it for, what you call it? Hybrid immunity. Hybrid immunity mean you took the shot, and then you have a breakthrough cases, and you live, you live through it, then you have hybrid immunity. But don't fancy about that, please. Oh, I got hybrid too, so I'm going to take a shot. And people always say, we see that. Before the vaccine, so many people die from COVID? Anything, car accident, anything, suicide, hang yourself, you'll die from COVID, all right? And after the vaccine, you're old age. And I hear people say, if you're healthy, you won't have any problem. I don't need a shot to bring out my problems. So I stay away from it. $2 million, I won't take you, take it. So anyway, why we are having the fifth shot? Because we are not all dead yet. You are, encourage people to watch the movie called 2000 Mill, and you know what's going on. Because the globalists, the people say, how anybody want to kill somebody? You and I don't want to kill people, but there are people there. We see it, we know it, and don't keep bragging about safe and effective on the shot. It should be have freedom of choice to do what you want to do. That's what I was going to say. Anyway, read the real, what call it? The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy is a good book. I give you all my kids a copy. I said, "Really," before I die. That's very important. So anyway, I know it's time's getting there, but I'm going to sing my little freedom song. I just remember what Benjamin said. I'll tie it with that. Love and freedom, love and freedom. Everyone desire hate and tyranny, hate and tyranny. Everyone despite heavenly love, heavenly love will be back in time if all the, all the patriots united and combined. And Benjamin say, either you hang together or you hang separately. And I got kicked out of General Hospital passing my life-saving thing. He said, "I'm going to call a security guard." I said, "I'm trying to save people alive. How many people you want to kill?" So Cory, I say, "Just get up the parking lot and talk to people on the sidewalk. I won't take the jet." Okay, thank you very much. Aloha.
All right. Thank you, Genevieve. Welcome, Sandy. I think that's Sandy. This is the public comment on general, public comment items. And Sandy, can you pull the mic down closer to you there or over to you a little bit?
Thanks. Hi, I'm Sandra Groby, and I've been living in Eureka for about 22 years. And when I first came looking for a place to live, I had just retired and I had heard about Humboldt. Hadn't really spent any time here. But on one of my first visits, I went to the county offices and asked if I could see their general plans. And I picked up the 1972 general plan for Humboldt County and looked in there, and there was a statement in there under their goals and policies. "We, the people of Humboldt County, recognize and acknowledge our total dependence on and accept our obligation to use the land in a manner"
Yeah.
"...which will sustain."
Thank you, Genevieve.
"benefit and sustain and benefit man and all living things." This statement was not in the general plan in 1984 and, no, following 1984. And I didn't see any other general plans until 1917, and it's not in there. However, I was very impressed by the fact that these people in 1970, in 1972 and the 80s and 90s had had the forward-looking planning to include all living things in their concern. And I just hope people can think about that now. Are we including all living things in our plans? So I have a feeling that we're not even interested in having very many people come to check our plan because this is an ad I saw last week in the Journal.
Oh, actually, Sandy, that item is still coming up.
I know.
Okay, okay, good. Just, go ahead.
But it's rather misleading because it says the county releases long-awaited draft climate action plan. And I thought, well, if you read the first, second paragraph, it says, oh, it's not, that's not exactly true. Nobody released the plan. And so, but I thought it was interesting, too. They just call it the CAP, the CIP, because I wouldn't have even read this. I didn't know that that was a nickname for an important thing like the Capitol Improvement Plan. I thought, well, maybe the city's trying to slip it by us. So anyway, for several months, actually over a year, I had been sending in suggested policies and goals for the plan.
Sandy, I'm sorry, that's the three minutes. But if you'd like to give us.
They're in your packet.
Okay, thank you.
Please look at them. Thank you.
All right. All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Honored for the record, Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, California Republic, Humboldt County, land and soil jurisdiction. I, woman, noticed by your agenda today that you went into a secret meeting with those who trespass on American soil with a foreign jurisdiction, namely British accreditation registry bar members. One of the agenda items on a long list of litigations is consider public employee appointment for the position of county council. This is a copy of proclamation of the Board of Supervisors dated September 14th of last year that proclaims Constitution Week in Humboldt County and encourages all citizens, people to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by celebrating the freedoms protected to us through the guardian of our liberties and to remember that lost rights never may be regained. Virginia Bass. What I read in the Supreme Law of the Land, Article 1, Section 9, Clause 8, is no title of nobility shall be granted by the United States, and no person holding any office or profit of trust under them shall, without the consent of Congress, accept of any present emolment, office, or title of any kind, whatever, from any king, prince, or foreign state. The Foreign Agents Registration Act of 1938 requires the British accreditation registry members who are in public office to file their foreign status with the Department of Justice. I require your head county council's license number so I can verify who he is or she and what he represents. I also require a certified copy of the filing. In fact, I require license numbers of all your county council public employees, and Maggie Fleming. You can send it to, I left my name and my address. When you stand and salute a four-colored flag, I cringe. For the most part, no man or woman on the land has a reason to be in commerce. And I brought you a real flag with the stripes going vertical, heaven to earth. It's a peace flag. Are we going to wait until we have bombs falling on US soil? Where's the line? And I also left a link to War as a Racket by America's Most Decorated Soldier, Smedley Butler, USMC. Thank you. What happened to the person that was here after you stuff with?
Actually, you can just leave it on the side there. Remodeled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if you'd like to leave those copies, we can definitely, and thank you, Alicia. So is there anyone that's in the audience that wanted to comment on items not on the agenda at this time? All right, so with that, we will then go to those who are on the phone. And I have 5457, followed by 1041. All right, so 5457, press star six to unmute.
Thank you. This is Lori Birdsong. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up the topic of the telecommunications towers and the proposed 5G rollout that's happening all over. And to say that we, we as a community, need to stand together. We need to work together and stop this insidious thing from happening to our county. It will just decimate our landscape and not only hurt people's health, but also all living things. And I appreciate what the woman brought up earlier in the county plan about respecting all living things. So we have the authority as a county to orchestrate our future. And the onus is on all of us. And the onus is on all of us. And you are our supervisors, so we are suggesting that we all work together and stop this thing from coming on. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And the next is 1041. I think it's Donnie, perhaps. Press star six to unmute. And you'll have three minutes.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Amazing. Yeah. To thank you guys so much for making Humboldt County just the most amazing county. It's, I mean, Orange Cap County and Orange Cap City is just, is just the place to be. I love it so much. It's super inclusive to my lifestyle, you know? I love this rap video that's out right now called Orange Cap City. It really kind of highlights my lifestyle and the inclusivity that happens up here to where I can come up here and I can be who I want to be, and it's okay. You know, and so like, what I like is, you know, like, I'm a heroin addict, you know? And I take Sentinel. And when I go, you know, broke, I can get free needles. And when I go broke, if I can't even get the drug, I can always just wear flip-flops, like, and kind of blindfold myself and walk around, like, behind the library or like, in some of like, the walking trails around Humboldt and, you know, especially around Eureka and Arcata. And as long as I have flip-flops or some kind of open-toe shoe on and I'm not really watching where I'm going, I could probably just, you know, score a fix just by kind of bumping into a needle on the ground. That is fantastic. It's an opportunity of a lifetime for me. When I start having, you know, the feels, I gotta, I gotta do something. And that's what I do, you know? And I come here because I know that if I, you know, if I rob a store, or if I, like, rob someone a gunpoint or anything like that, the cops will just let me go. And they'll just let me go and let me go and let me go because they understand as a community that the inclusivity here, it needs to include everybody, like, all the animals, like the lady was saying, all the animals, all the animals. And I'm an animal, you know? And so I gotta be included in this, too. And, you know, some people, they like to, you know, play poker and shoot pool and high-five each other. And I'm, you know, seeing karaoke, and that's their good time. Well, some people are like me, and their good time is, you know, sitting alone in an alley with a spoon and a needle and, you know, kissing the world goodbye for a good couple hours. And what's the, what's the difference? You know, we have to accept people for who they are and then provide them with the things that they need at the taxpayers' expense because that's, as a governing body, that's kind of what we have to do. I'm gonna call Eureka City Council later tonight and thank them, too, because they're definitely, they're crushing it. They're, you guys are all crushing that. Give yourselves all a round of applause. I mean, it's just, wow. Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Thank you. I don't see any more hands up. So we are now back to the board, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, I believe, which is coming to us from the Planning and Building Department. And it's regarding the Climate Action Plan or Humboldt County Regional Climate Action Plan. So this is something that's inclusive of the region. So looking forward to hearing more.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Good afternoon. John Ford and Michael Richardson with the Planning and Building Department to present the Climate Action Plan. And I want to be real clear about what this is today. We're not asking for adoption of the plan. While we're really at a place where a draft has been prepared, and it has been prepared cooperatively in partnership with the cities within the county. So that's why it's referred to as a regional plan. The cities are all being asked to take the same action, which is to say that this serves as an adequate document to be able to start preparation of the environmental impact report. We recognize that there are still some things that need to be worked out as part of this plan, that there are still people commenting on things and working on things. So it doesn't have to be perfect at this point. Saying yes, this is an adequate project description to prepare an environmental document doesn't prejudice a future action at all. It is important for the board this, today, to identify any things that are of particular concern that you believe need to be addressed and would want to be addressed. And if you feel like you would be uncomfortable with it going forward without those being readdressed now, that is an appropriate action. Although I would also offer that it could be that the direction from the board would be that as you're working on the EIR, to make sure that these things, these concerns from the board are addressed or are readdressed or are addressed differently, or that the EIR looks at alternatives to address things a little bit differently. There are a lot of opportunities here to explore some different things, to explore some different concerns, and to evaluate those in the context of the EIR. So there's still a lot of movement in this. There's a lot of moving parts. But what we really want to do is continue to make forward progress with the Climate Action Plan in partnership with the cities within the county. And make sure that when the environmental document is prepared, that it does an adequate job of examining the, the plan itself, but also examining alternatives that the, the region may want to consider. Michael's gonna walk us through the, the components of the plan briefly, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And prior to that, Michael, just letting people know that we've moved on from the general public comment time. I see a few numbers have popped up. I just want them to know that any comment, the next public comment will be regarding this Climate Action Plan. I just didn't want them thinking this is general public comment. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Chair Bass, and members of the board. Michael Richardson with the Planning and Building Department. I do have a presentation. I'm not sure, Nikki, is that able to be pulled up? Or should I just go it alone?
Yes, yes, I do have it. If you want. Oh.
As Director Ford mentioned, the purpose of this action is to just determine whether your board is comfortable with beginning environmental review of the draft Climate Action Plan. The goal of the Climate Action Plan broadly is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout Humboldt County. Other jurisdictions have different uses, different functions of their climate action plans. They get into resiliency planning and wildfire planning. This is different. This is just focused on reducing our greenhouse gas emissions to meet state targets. Here's a graphic that shows the steps involved with climate action planning. We first develop a greenhouse gas or GHG inventory, which identifies what the sources of our emissions are. In this case, with this Climate Action Plan, we've got two inventories, one for 1990 and one for 2015. And we're working to update the 2015, 1 to 2020. Then we reach out and communicate with stakeholders, and in this case, all of the cities. We set goals and select actions. And that initial set has been described in the Climate Action Plan. That's in front of you. And this third step also includes review of the document through the environmental impact report process. And then we would finally, coming out of that, we would have your board and all of the jurisdictions select the Climate Action Plan that is a good fit for each of the jurisdictions. And then we go about obtaining resources to implement the, the plan, take action, track and report it, and start, start it all over again, where we would re-inventory ourselves in 2025 or, you know, on whatever metric we want to, whatever timeframe we want to use for our measuring. The Climate Action Plan has identified a number of targets that could be used. We're, the 2020 one is not really relevant. And so we're, we're focused on the 2030 target, which is to achieve 40% below our 1990 emission levels. And this is a target that is set by the state. And if we meet that target, which the Climate Action Plan does, all of the measures in there cumulatively, we've run the numbers and we meet the, the state targets of achieving that 40% reduction, then that gives us some, some benefits in terms of environmental review of projects. So there's kind of a carrot that's, that's put out there for jurisdictions that do meet that target and that develop a Climate Action Plan that meet that target. After the 2030 goal is met, then we're looking at a 2045 goal of net neutrality, where we have, for, for all of our emissions, we've identified reduction measures such that there's a net zero GHG emission rate for the county. As I mentioned, the target in this Climate Action Plan is tied to that 2030 goal. We've identified a set of measures that achieves that statewide goal. Here, this graphic shows a breakdown of what components achieve the relative amounts of that target. And so you could see in the upper right-hand part of the pie-shaped wedge, the electrification of existing infrastructure is where we are getting the most bang for our buck in terms of meeting our statewide goals. And then below that, zero emission vehicles, 23%. And then to the left of that, zero emission freight is 20%. And so you could see combining those together, we're over 70% of the, the target. And then we've got some other measures that also contribute as well. Here's a high-level timeline. Your board initiated this whole project back in the fall of 2018. And we've been working ever since on developing this, this draft plan. We've put it out for public review in April. And, and now we are getting set to begin the, the draft EIR process. And then after that, we will hold public hearings. All of the jurisdictions will hold-
Michael, are you okay with questions now?
Sure.
Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
You had a online public review. We didn't have any public meetings on this, right?
We've had workshops.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, as far as general, everybody, public meetings, like we do on a lot of large things like this.
Yeah. Your board has not had any public hearings, for instance, on this.
In a while.
If I can, I want to clarify. There were, there were workshops all around the county that were publicly noticed.
Fully aware. Fully aware. Thank you.
Yeah. So we've, we've had all of the local jurisdictions, Eureka, Arcata, have had their own workshops. And we've had them scattered throughout the county, Redway, Fortuna. And I've visited a number of city council meetings as well to explain where we're at and to invite their comments as well. And then the last part of, the last step here would be to present to your board the Draft Climate Action Plan for adoption and certification of the EIR. And then all of the other jurisdictions would tear off of that. And we're expecting that would happen in August of 2023. So the basic question, should we proceed forward with environmental review of the CAP? And here's just a slide that shows kind of a status review of the, all of the other jurisdictions involved here. Arcata, on May 18th, gave us direction to move forward. Blue Lake, John Ford and I will be at that meeting this evening. Eureka was on May 19th, and they gave us an affirmative vote. Ferndale on the 18th, same thing. Fortuna, they didn't take an action. Instead, they said that they may provide comments to, to the board. I have not received any comments from them directly. And then Rio Del is also tonight. I'll be covering that one. And Trinidad, two weeks ago, they also didn't take any action, but they accepted public comment, and they were generally in favor of moving forward with it. That's the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, Michael. I'm wondering, so the report that you just gave on the cities was how it was reacted to, to the cities?
Yeah, that's right.
And during the discussion with the cities, the public, public comment came in also from community members?
Yes, that's correct.
And did you, have you, with those public comments, recognized that there's probably some clarifying facts that people are asking?
Yeah. The public comment, there's been a kind of a thread of public comment that we've received asking for the, the Climate Action Plan to include the industrial point source emissions and to do more outreach to rural property owners to identify more appropriate measures for them. And, and there's a couple of others. And the city councils that have received those comments, Fortuna in particular, were impressed, I would say. And if they were to provide comments, they provided verbal comments that, you know, basically agreed with the sentiment expressed. And I explained to the Fortuna City Council that the, the EIR phase is a place where we can handle those sort of comments. We can develop alternatives that will, for instance, include the point source industrial emissions in the 1990 inventory and, and just run that analysis and see where it takes us and develop an alternative that could be available for jurisdictions to, to adopt in the end.
Thank you for that. So a baseline is, is it 1993 or 1990 baseline that we are looking at?
We are using the 1990 baseline.
A 1990 baseline. Thank you. I'm wondering, in this document, it doesn't refer to carbon credits at all. And during the EIR process, if we don't, is there a downfall if we don't recognize carbon credits, especially in our rural setting and so forested, if we don't utilize that EIR to incorporate everything that may affect that?
Yeah. We have, for a long time now, been really interested in including carbon credits in the Climate Action Plan. We recognize that Humboldt County has tremendous wealth when it comes to carbon credits. And we would love to include those in the analysis and in our greenhouse gas emission strategies. The, the difficulty with those is the, the amount of time and energy it takes to develop a reduction strategy or, I'm sorry, a sequestration strategy is really intensive. And so we, we need some additional horsepower to develop that. And we will certainly push as hard as we can in the EIR process with the resources that we have to get as far as we can there. I'm not sure that we'll, in the end, get all the way to the finish line in terms of our sequestration program, but we will push it as far as we possibly can. And in the future, I would love to include more.
I think Director Ford wanted to add something.
If I could add to something. I think the thing that Michael is saying fairly in code is that in order to do an adequate job of that, it's going to require additional funding. And so if that's something that the board wants to see us do, we, we need to be able to pay for a consultant to come in and do an adequate job of that.
Thank you. I guess that would be up to this board, but I don't see how with our, you know, geographically and our, this is more of an urban document, as I read it, not really a rural document, and works well within Fortuna or, excuse me, Eureka, Arcata, those areas. But rurally, I see that we've maybe missed the mark a little bit for rural living. And myself, my district is very rural and, and has that, those interests of carbon credits. Additionally, I noticed that there was a 20% reduction in water usage. And I clarified with Director Ford this morning that that was probably production of water through the GSDs. But I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate in this document to say that when it's conditional on, on climate, you know, drought or not drought. And, and so we're gonna put a blanket 20% reduction in, in water usage? I'm, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. And then-
If, if I could just-
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sure. No, go ahead.
Supervisor Michelle or Bushnell?
Michelle's fine.
Is, is that, I went and looked for that this morning after we talked. And that is a- Is that, I went and looked for that this morning after we talked, and that is a reference to the California Green Building Code. That's already in the California Green Building Code.
It is.
And so a consequence of adopting the California Green Building Code is that list of things then gets enacted.
Okay. So that already is instated? That is already there?
That's already there.
So that's just moving it forward into the, into the cap?
What, what it's doing is, is that there is an option within the California Building Code to adopt the typical building code, and then there's a green and then a little bit of a greener building code.
Sure.
And in order to receive the full benefit of the cap, it's a matter of adopting the California Green Building Code, and then those things become part of that.
And it's necessary to put it in both?
It is necessary, and one of the things that Michael mentioned is that in order to achieve all of the criteria, the reduction by 2045 to become carbon neutral, all the things that are currently in the cap are necessary. You might ask, what's the importance of that? Is that just a political thing that we're trying to do, or are there really benefits to the county? So as, as the county moves forward with any sort of development, it's going to get to a point where greenhouse gas emissions, climate change become environmental discussion and part of every single project. If we've got a qualified climate action plan, meaning it achieves all the goals, we don't have to redo that analysis over and over again. The projects just then need to comply with the climate action plan. And so I know some of this is shocking, but the reality is, is this is where our legislative process is going at the state level, and, and if we aren't moving with that, we're going to be increasingly in a more and more difficult position to see development approved because we're going to have to say that, in spite of all this stuff that the state's saying is really important, we don't think it's that important, and we're going to have to do an EIR and adopt findings of overriding considerations in order to make things happen.
So when you, when you, Michael, the chart you put up, and it says, you know, that we'll reduce propane usage and generator usage, and we'll go to electrified, and on that percentage base, is that taken into account, rural living, that those things are not achievable in a certain percentage of our people?
Yeah, it is targeting a certain number of buildings being retrofitted, and new buildings coming online will be electrified. And it doesn't identify where those are going to occur, but they could be incentivized through programs that are targeting the more urbanized areas. And, and as I said earlier, the rural areas, the measures that are going to fit in the rural areas, I think are still a work in progress. And so it may be appropriate to hold rural areas more harmless from certain measures and ramp up their attention on other fronts.
And how do we recognize that in this program? How do we recognize the more rural areas? So what you're, so I want to give you an example for, I'm trying to understand. So if I want to build a home in rural southern Humboldt, and there is no power available, and, and I come in to get a building permit, and the zoning's correct, and it's fine to build a house there according to everything by planning, but I cannot get power there, it cannot be electrified, what is the answer?
Well, if you're not getting power, I'm not sure how the, the home would function.
Off the grid, Michael.
Okay.
So generator, propane. That's how people function off the grid.
Okay. And, and so in, in that case, we, we wouldn't be able to meet the electrification goal, but they would perhaps be able to meet the goal in other ways, through, for instance, developing renewable energy systems on their property.
So my specific ask would be, would that home be denied?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Would the home be denied because we're not meeting the cap goal?
No, it, it wouldn't be denied. It would be, it wouldn't count, obviously, towards our greenhouse gas reduction measures. And we'd have to figure out a way to make up for whatever projected reduction was going to occur.
And, you know, solar could be used, but, you know, there are times of the year that you cannot use solar, it doesn't, it's not efficient all the time. So are we recognizing that in this plan, is my question?
I think we have a little bit more work to do, frankly, and, and that's going to be a focus of the public engagement through the EIR process.
I have one final question. Thank you for that. So Director Ford, given what he just said, with a little bit more work to do for the rural living, what would you, I'm hesitant to vote for this based on that. Could you give me a recommendation?
I would say that you have two options before you to feel more confident. Option number one would be to say, you know, I really want to see the rural living material incorporated into the draft cap before I'm ready to say prepare an EIR. An alternative to that would be to say, go ahead, start work on the EIR, but it needs to address rural living. It needs to address the complexities of, of living in the country, and it needs to address these particular points that you've raised. I'm not going to itemize them all now, but-
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right. Are there any other questions at the moment? I know we have, I think, some public comment. So if you're interested in, first, we will go to those who are in public, and if you happen to be watching at home, make sure you have your hands raised. So it looks like Charles may want to make a comment on this item. And this, again, is regarding the regional climate action plan.
My name is Charles Wilson. I've seen this energy stuff go back and forth and back and forth. I took one of the first solar energy courses in the United States back in 1958 or so, and all that kind of stuff. I've seen, 60 years ago, I went up to British Columbia, the glacier had, up there, had receded one mile in those days. We didn't have all the gas emissions in those days. So to me, it puts a lot of question into whether the validity of the guilt that has been pushed, this idea that we can control climate and we are superior to the natural forces that are pushing it in different directions. I think 900, year 900, it, there was a drastic change in climate, and there weren't any emissions in those days, at least not gas emissions from humans. The gas, the goal cites gas emissions. Now, the British, BBC had an article saying that 6% to 17% of the heat that would be generated would be from the contrails from the airplanes, creating surface clouds and constant, and affecting the radiation in outer space, I assume. In 1949, they had a different idea of this whole thing there because they were afraid they were going to run out of oil. Now, nobody talks about running out of oil now. We're going to have unlimited sources of oil and coal and all that kind of stuff. But in 1949, their fear was that in 20 years, they wouldn't have any oil, and so they had to do something there. We tried, Humboldt State has this idea that they're going to bring, most, half the population of Humboldt State's going to come from down in Los Angeles and the Bay Area, and that's going to increase the transportation costs and the transportation gas emissions and all that kind of stuff. The, so anyway, but it is nice that they don't mention guilt, although they want to punish the people that are guilty, and the assumption of, that we have control of the climate is, I think, is false.
All right. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Genevieve, welcome.
Thank you. Anyway, I listened to all this. I got a little brainstorming here. So I was appreciate Michelle bring up all the question. My point is, here we are, I see a contradiction. You talk about climate change. If you stop the cam trail, I'll agree with that. And also, here we are, a nice little rural country, Humboldt County, whatever we are, a beautiful place, we want to turn into a big city. 2030 agenda, looks like we cannot avoid that. Why? Every place have a different specialty, special beauty. We'll keep it that way. Instead of building a big country, of course, you have more people, more pollution, then you have to worry about your emission and everything here. Here, you think about the reduction, there, you're building a big country. To me, it's contradiction. That's why you make a beauty of every place is a different thing. Humboldt is Humboldt. Humboldt have all the, all the resource for water, and we're bringing down to south, and now we're short of water. Ridiculous to me. You've got to respect the nature, whatever nature it is, and don't try to change the current climate. No more cam trail, I'll agree with all that. But anyway, thank you for listening. Okay. Now, I say, we have to change the thinking, and we need to follow Constitution too. That's called respecting nature, and God will. God made us a beautiful county. We don't want to turn into a big city. Big city. 250,000 people, we see what's going on. We cannot do that. Well, natural come, but don't change the big city and thinking about limited emission and climate change on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we have four speakers online, so we will now close the in-person comment and go to those who are interested in speaking. Again, we're speaking on the Climate Action Plan, so 0116 followed by 8912.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Ash here with the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, HumboldtSC.com. Humboldt County Board of Supervisors is about to make another mistake by yet again following the state and federal lead. This timeline on climate change has seemed item H1. Nationally record high fuel costs and supply chain shortages are being used to frame the need for a shift to renewable energy. Let us not forget whose destructive policies and executive orders caused these problems.
The pipeline won't run through Nebraska because it won't run through the U.S. at all. President Joe Biden scrapped the project that would have moved Canadian oil through the U.S. to refineries along the Gulf Coast.
One of its first executive orders, President Biden called the Keystone XL Project a disservice to the national interest, and that leaving the permit for it in place would not be consistent with his economic and climate imperative.
Putin's invasion of Ukraine has driven up gas prices and food prices all over the world.
This climate agenda is a solution to a problem that Biden caused, not some result of Putin and his war in Ukraine. It says so in Joey's executive order, 1399.
You've seen a lot of wildfires in your life. What do you make of the ones you've seen this year?
This is America fast forward. We can get more aggressive, we can be more prescriptive, more targeted in terms of our vegetation management, forest management, our prevention strategy, land use strategies, our technologies on suppression, and our personnel in terms of prepositioning a lot of our assets. But there is, there is something so fundamental that also cannot be denied, and that is climate change.
Our greaseball governor uses much the same tactics, blaming California fires on climate change and not once mentioning that best didn't.
These amazing images show a man in the middle of a brush fire and he reckons of having started it.
He's lit seven different fires.
The drama comes at a scary time in Southern California with deadly wildfires raging.
It was kind of mind-blowing. I, it was one of those traumatic events where I don't think your mind could really broaden as much, you would wish to think.
A Bay Area college professor has been arrested after being accused of setting several fires near national forest land. 47-year-old Gary Maynard, that's his photo, is being held in the Sacramento County Jail tonight.
It's time to grow spine and look out for Humboldt's interests and stop following the destructive path set by the national and state woke agenda. Getting rid of fossil fuels by 2030 is unreasonable. We don't have the electric infrastructure in place to do so. Reducing household water use by 20% while the state is letting water storage flow freely to the ocean to generate an emergency is just insane. Just say no.
And this is unusual, I would not normally do this. Supervisor Madron has to leave our meeting. I mean, sorry, Wilson. Madron might want to leave our meeting also. You've got to, it's one of those days, but because he has to catch, he has to, he has to leave, he did ask for a few moments to make his comments, and so I'm going out of my normal rotation, and so-
Yes, I apologize. I have to go due to an out-of-town meeting that I need to get to. But I just wanted to comment that I read the draft plan is not perfect by my standards or by the standards of folks that are in either my constituencies or others, and that's fine. I think it's good enough to start the sequel process, is what I'm trying to say. I think that in incorporating the comments that we've heard today, so far at least, that I've heard with relationship to the supervisors, who you take direction from, is completely reasonable in trying to address and look at issues around the challenges of more remote living styles. Nonetheless, I feel like there is, there needs to be and will be some response to that because, again, that, the impacts of climate change are pretty extreme in those same spaces. And so we're going to have to both be responsive and responsible, and I think we can do that, and I think we can do that through this process, through diverse opinions, and I'm supportive of the recommendation that's on the agenda here, which is to have you guys move forward with the sequel process. That's it. If I could stay longer, I'd make the motion and do all that stuff, but we have comments, and I got to run. So appreciate everybody's efforts on this. And I wish I could be here on the next item, but I'll maybe just comment to staff on my way out, and they can, they can let you guys know how I feel about that. Thanks.
All right. So now we're going to return to our regularly scheduled public comment time. So we have 8912. Now, thank you for your patience, followed by 1041.
Hi, my name is Matt Simmons, and I'm a staff attorney with the Environmental Protection Information Center, or EPIC. I want to state our support for the Climate Action Plan as envisioned and urge you to proceed with environmental review. I'd also like to take this opportunity to specifically support the decision to exclude industrial point sources and encourage you to do the same. Here's why. As a tool of the county and cities, the Climate Action Plan is rightly focused on areas over which our local governments have influence or control. Local governments have very little control or influence over emissions from industrial point sources, which are regulated at the state and federal level. It is standard practice for local climate action plans in California to exclude industrial point sources. Including industrial point sources in the Humboldt Climate Action Plan, inventories would essentially mean taking credit for the emissions reductions from mill closures over the last several decades. That may sound appealing, since it would make it appear as if we had already reduced greenhouse gas emissions enough to meet the 2030 target. However, if we lean on this accounting trick and fail to take significant action now to reduce emissions from other sectors, we will simply be kicking the can down the road and setting up future planners for failure. This will be a disaster 10 years from now, when our local governments would have to figure out how to meet mandated 2045 targets without having made any progress in the meantime. Also, on the subject of carbon credits in the cap, I just want to make sure everyone understands that you can't have carbon credits double counting anywhere, right? So if any sort of project is already producing carbon credits to, you know, make up for some oil refinery in, you know, San Francisco or something, the county can't also get credit for those, those forest projects. So please keep that in mind when you're making decisions. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is 1041, followed by 0260.
Hello, my name is Donnie Creek Moore from Humboldt Freedom Coalition. Hello, my name is Donnie Creek Moore from Humboldt Freedom Coalition, HumboldtFC.com. I was calling, and to speak in direct opposition to Agenda Item Number H, P, R, E, I, the Climate Action Plan, I would propose that you reject it outright, and also reject the green housing building plans. All these serve to do is basically pass ahead of science and climate alarmists that have been pushing a hoax agenda from, since 2006 and before. You know, in 2006, Al Gore's Inconvenient Truth came out, and now the only inconvenient truth is that we're here in 2022. And, you know, I'm reading a study right now produced in 2017. That says the rate at which the Earth's atmosphere is warming has not so significantly accelerated over the past 23 years, according to research at the University of Alabama in Huntsville. If you take away the transient cooling in 1983 and 1992 caused by two major volcanic eruptions in the preceding years, the remainder underlying warming trend in the bottom eight kilometers of the atmosphere was .096, or that is .17 Fahrenheit per decade between January 1979 and June 2017. So every single year from 1979 to 2017, it increased .17 Fahrenheit. That was unexpectedly close to the .09 Celsius warming trend found when similar research was published in 1994 with only 15 years of data, said Dr. John Christie, Director of UHS's Earth Systems Science Center. Now, they're befuddled by these things. This guy was trying to prove the point of something ridiculous like climate change, and he found the opposite science. Here's a quote, "We indicated 23 years ago in our 1994 Nature article that climate models had the atmosphere sensitivity to CO2 much too high," said Christie, newly authored in the study, which has been accepted for publication in the 2017 fourth quarter edition of the Asia-Pacific Journal of Atmosphere Science and is available online. This recent paper bolsters that conclusion. Mathematically removing the natural but transient climate effects of volcanoes and El Nino, Pacific Ocean warming and cooling events leaves an underlying climate trend, all or some part of which might be attributed to human causes, including enhanced greenhouse forcing caused by rising levels of CO2 and other man-made greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. At present, however, there is no accepted tool or technique for confidently estimating how much of the warming in the past 38-plus years might be due to the natural causes, and the warming is not significant. So there you have it. I mean, it, you know, it was, it was just like a couple of board meetings ago that I remember it was measured like three inches of increase in the oceans, you know, and all this is to basically justify this, you know, all these crazy drastic changes.
Thank you, Donnie. Three-minute timer goes fast. We have 0260, followed by 4756. If you're 0260, press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon. Thomas Holder, I just want to clarify, you can hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
So I want to start off, thank you Supervisor Bushnell for asking those questions. I'm a very big supporter of rural living, and a lot of District Two is also rural living, so thank you for all those questions. I would encourage this board to thank staff, as well as I thank staff for what they've presented, but to continue it to a date uncertain until the industrial heat sources are factored in, as well as some sort of component for rural living, rural lifestyle off the grid, and do not move forward with it as it is. I think what it is right now is really leaving that industrial baseline heat sources and excluding rural living actually drives the forces of Agenda 21, and it's something, that's something I don't really support. Yes, we do, according to the speaker earlier, we do meet the standards for 2030 right now if you factor that in, and that just doesn't make some people happy. That gives us 20 years to make smart choices that don't drastically impact people financially, and also don't drastically affect the environment in a negative way. So please do include those things. Also, disclosure, this is just kind of along the rumor mill thing. It's, I've been told by more than one source that one of the supervisors may have been in direct contact with consultant, kind of helping the county draft this along, and I don't know if I missed it, but I didn't hear any disclosure from any of the board of supervisors disclosing that. Maybe it's just a rumor, maybe it's not true. But please, continue this to a date uncertain until you include that industrial heat source and rural living. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you. So we'll go to 4756, and then back to the board.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, it took me a minute to find star six. Good afternoon. This is Caroline Griffith, I'm the Executive Director of the North Coast Environmental Center, and I'm excited that we finally get an opportunity to comment on the cap in front of you all. As folks have mentioned, both planners and commentators, you know, future environmental review of projects will most likely be held to the standards set forth in this cap, so it's really important to make sure that we have a strong and well-thought-out climate action plan, as well as a plan to actually implement it. I believe that you have all received pretty comprehensive comments from a coalition of environmental groups, including NEC, EPC, Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, and 350 Humboldt, about how we think the cap could be strengthened. So I won't go into too much depth about that, but just touched on a couple of issues. First of all, we definitely support the decision to exclude industrial point sources from the cap. One main reason is that you need to focus on areas in which we actually have local government control, and these sources are largely regulated by the states and federal level. And also, as a previous commenter mentioned, taking credit for the reduction of industrial point source emissions that happened when the mills shut down is really just kicking the can down the road. We actually have a responsibility to, not just future generations, but to folks who will be working on these issues 10 and 15 years from now, to actually start working on them now, and to make significant progress so that they aren't stuck having to figure out how to meet mandated 2045 targets, when we haven't made any progress in the meantime. We would also like to see the cap align with other regional planning documents, like the Regional Transportation Plan, and RCEA's Repower Plan, especially when it comes to the goals for EV charging stations, which it's been indicated in other public meetings that the planners intend to do so. So we really, we encourage you to move forward with the EIR process for the cap. We already have less than seven years to meet the targets, even under the best scenario, so we really need to move forward with the process now. This has been in development for years, as was mentioned during the presentation, and so we really can't afford to spend more time aiming for perfection rather than just moving forward with this process. A lot can be hammered out during the EIR process. And a lot of folks have mentioned that this is, we're doing this because the state law requires it, but the fact is that there's a reason why the state requires it, and it's because we desperately need to reduce our emissions so that we can have a livable planet in the future. The Internet Governmental Panel on Climate Change, which is made up of 195 scientists from all over the world, have stated that though we've already locked in some level of irreversible climate change, the sooner we act, the more we can do to avoid or mitigate even worse consequences. So approving this draft cap and moving forward into the environmental review process is the next step in us taking coordinated regional action to reduce our emissions.
All right. Thank you, Caroline. Thank you. All right. So they're no more speakers, we'll go back to the board. I was going to ask the staff first if they had some, anything they wanted to respond to there, and then we'll go to Supervisor Bushnell.
We've heard the public comment, we don't, we don't have anything.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. So I also was curious if this cap is in line, like the water resource has their own climate action document, and so I'm wondering, I was wondering, and I'm sure other agencies do as well, so I'm wondering if our cap is following suit with ones that are already in existence?
It's aligned with a prior version of the Regional Transportation Plan, not the updated version of it, and there may be other plans that need to be aligned with, and I'm not sure that it's aligned with all of them.
So is it possible to consult with those documents while we are doing the environment, the EIR or the SEQUO document, and make sure that we are? I don't want to send dual messages. I don't want to have a set of rules here. I mean, my preference would be that if the, like the regional water source or the transportation board, that we send, you know, the consecutive message and not have our own set of rules. It gets quite confusing.
Yeah, I think a primary focus of the EIR will be to document the climate action plans from other agencies and to do our best to align with those as well.
Okay. And then, so Director Ford and I have had, well, I've had more conversations than he has about the power grids in Humboldt County. And currently, PG&E says, and they've moved it out years to years to years, on what they can hook up, especially in my district from Fortuna South. So with this document, you know, we're encouraging electrifying everything. What if we can't accommodate that? What happens? And this is coming from Pacific Gas and Electric that says, we can't accommodate you right now. What happens?
Yeah, this, this document is intended to be, to take an adaptive approach to climate action measures, and so if we find that some of these measures are infeasible, we will, at that point, change course to develop measures that are feasible.
Go ahead.
If I could, I know the electric and PG&E is a huge, huge issue, and I think that that would really benefit if the board were going to make, give us direction today, to give direction to make sure that that's evaluated in the EIR and then incorporated into the assumptions of the cap, so that we know that there is a primary goal, and then there are contingencies depending on what happens with the grid.
Okay, thank you. I have one last question. So why, why wouldn't we want to consider industrial points?
Some of the commenters explained that it has to do with what local sources or local governments can control, and that's been the case with other climate action plans that we reviewed. There are a couple that have included point source industrial emissions in them. Los Angeles County is one, and then I just learned that Yolo County may be another one. The, there may be really good reasons why we would want to include industrial point sources, and the Climate Action Plan takes kind of an ambivalent approach going into the EIR development to say that this, this really does need to be evaluated in the alternative section of the EIR.
So that is a direction we could, if the board so chooses, that we could request today?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Madron, then Bone, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a good place to be in the process. Obviously, we've got a long way to go. I think there's some really great elements in here. Obviously, many of them need to be flushed out more. My biggest recommendation, and it's in here in a few places, is that as we develop this plan, we think about what sorts of financial incentives and permit incentives can be embedded into the plan to reward landowners, industries, businesses that boldly go forth and implement these things that are going to help our, our planet, help our communities, et cetera. So incentives, you know, whatever we can do to embed incentives is how we're going to get there. I mean, that's why solar panels are going on the roof. It's called incentives. And it's a great tool, because it rewards that, that effort that we're saying we'd like to see happen. So that's my main, main concern, and I would make a motion to direct planning and building staff to proceed forward with environmental review of the cap.
Second?
No, I'm going to amend.
That's fine.
There's supposed to be a process with this. We don't do it that often if we do it formally, so I'm going to look at our county council. We haven't had this.
Technically, you don't have a second.
Okay, well, you said you were going to amend, so I was trying to figure out if you were.
You can do it two ways. You can second and then amend it, or you can not have a second and then offer up a new motion.
Okay. And I saw, thank you. I saw Director Ford had, as maybe he had an idea.
Well, yeah, you just said it. Basically, if that motion doesn't pass, then there would be a new motion made.
Okay. So that second, that motion died for a second. It sounds awful to say that, and so we have a potential new motion.
Did you want to make a comment, though, before I make a motion? Well, I actually would like Director Ford given, so I would need help with this, is what I'm saying. I also like Supervisor Madron's idea. I wanted to know, neither one of you commented on whether incentives can be worked into the cap. Is that something that, that works in the cap or needs to be something different?
It certainly works in the cap. Incentives are referenced, as Supervisor Madron mentioned in a couple places.
Okay.
I think what I heard him encouraging is to leverage incentives to the maximum extent feasible, and so that's certainly something that we could, we can do. It does need to be understood that, to a certain extent, this is going to be giving guidance to prepare ordinances that set some standards. But then it can also take that and say, you know, if you're willing to go beyond that and do some other things, then there is incentives that are available too. And so I think that's really where the, the best impact happens.
Okay. So my motion would be that we adopt the cap, however, that we write into it that rural And you, you're going to have to help me with this, Director Ford. And I also want to explore carbon credits and carbon offsets, and that may be that we, you need to come back with something to the board to see what that would cost to do that. I also would like to have industrial points referenced.
Could I ask a question on that?
Yep.
So the industrial point source, sources, is it the direction there to include that in the cap, or is it the direction to explore that as an alternative in the EIR that could be incorporated as an alternative into the, the cap when it's ultimately adopted?
So I'm going to rely on you and your expertise to, where would it be most beneficial?
Be most beneficial in the alternative section, because then you would have a comparison of what it is to go forward with, with the point sources included and without the point sources included. And then, when you're finally making a decision, I would think part of your recommend, or part of your motion here would be to come back and clearly articulate
Yep.
what the difference is, why it would be a good idea or not a good idea to include that as part of, of the analysis.
That was going to be the end of my motion. What I would like for you to do, if possible, is to, if you could structure it so Nikki could capture it, and so that we could understand it better. If you have, are you understanding what I'm trying to include?
I am.
Okay.
Supervisor, I know Supervisor Bone would want to say something, but Supervisor Madron, while, while Director Ford is writing.
While he's putting together the motion, and I fully support all of those ideas. I think they need to be part of the process, absolutely. Do they need to be in the motion? Well, it's fine if it is, you know, I think giving our comments about what we'd like to see in the ultimate plan is the other, I mean, that's what I said about incentives. And just a couple of quick examples, like the Williamson Act. It's a great program because it reduces property tax for those that keep their lands in ag, and I know you know this, because your family is stewardship landowners, and so many other ranch families in the county have done such a great job of managing that land. But I've often thought, wouldn't it be nice if we had something like a Williamson Plus? And the plus is that, okay, under Williamson Act, you just got to keep it in ag. But what if you keep it in ag and do a really super job above and beyond the requirements to protect soil, water, wildlife, wetlands, all these other elements, and you were then able to qualify to write all those expenses off above and beyond what you're normally able to do as a business? You know, that would be like a Williamson Plus, where we'd be incentivizing ranchland owners to go another, another level, like your family. owners to go another, another level, like your family, like so many others. And then another one is on biomass. You know, we tend to always think of biomass as this centralized biomass plant, whether it's on the Simole Peninsula or in Blue Lake, or like what's being proposed out in Corbelle with the North Fork Lumber Company. Thank goodness, Schmidbauer invested all that money and we still have some mills here locally, right? But they're hauling all of their wood waste all the way to Anderson, where they have a Cogen plant where they can burn it for electricity through a biomass conversion. But what's happened in the last 20 years is we now have these mobile biomass conversion systems where you can bring in these air curtain burners that produce electricity and you can move them to the landing, to the road you're working on, and actually convert those fuels into electricity that you download to a battery pack. We're still missing the battery pack from Tesla. And then all you're doing is driving the trailer with the battery pack down the road to the grid with a pig tie, like a solar pig tie, and you upload it to the grid. What happens right now with centralized biomass is that if you start hauling it more than about 20 miles or so, it becomes a negative carbon equation. You're burning, burning more fossil fuel to get it to the plant to convert it to electricity than the electricity you produce. So there's a limit on how far that can really work while working towards climate action, you know, programs. So it's wonderful. I mean, technology's an amazing thing, and now we have these mobile systems that will allow us to go out into the forest, into the landings and the roads, and convert it right there on the spot, which is a far more carbon positive equation. So there's a lot of examples of that kind of stuff, where we can be working with timber and ranching and doing a lot of these things. So I support where you're going with, with this, and I'm just appreciative that we're moving forward on it, frankly.
And I, and I think Director Ford might have some suggested language now. That was per.
Director.
Yeah. And Supervisor Bone had a question.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Ford, I know your time in Humboldt's short, but as, as we move forward, is this thing ready to vote on, actually? When we're throwing all these innuendos and everything else? Because it's still called the project. And it seems like we're a long ways away, like we should probably be bringing something more forward for us to look at with everything you're adding. Because I mean, we have, there's, there's housing issues, there's.
So that's why I didn't want to presuppose what the board's preference might be. I, I understand that these are serious concerns. We've read the letters. We, we understand that there is, is really a push on both sides to include or not include certain things within the cap. I think one of the things that we're clearly hearing and recognizing, my time is short, but is clearly being articulated here, is that this effort needs to be more inclusive. And we really need to make sure that the rural property interests are being represented, that agricultural interests are being represented, and, and that the industrial interests are being adequately represented. That being said, can the board take an action on this today? The board is not prejudicing itself at all by saying, "Go ahead and start work on the EIR." What the board would be saying is that it's okay to go start work, but we want you to understand that before you finish the environmental analysis, before you develop another alternative draft to be reviewed for public consumption, we want to see these things adequately evaluated. And, and this, these are our expectations. So I think you can take that action today, that you can make a very, give very strong direction. And then, and then it will be up to staff to, to carry that out.
Supervisor Bone had a question.
And I have, I have some reservations. I mean, there's things in here about housing within a certain amount of miles to downtowns. You guys, we've got to build 2,500 homes if you really want to do this wind project, if you really want to do the fish project, and if we really want to accept what Cal Pauli's doing. And we're not going to put them all in eight-story apartment buildings. So we're going to, I mean, we're going to have to be more than three and a half miles downtown. Mostly, you know, I, I don't know how we're going to address that. I'm not saying we do it, you know, it puts a lot of work on HTA, the Transit Authority that makes people, makes sure people take buses. I mean, there's a lot of different things with, that could be done. But I'm, I'm just saying, we've lost a lot of housing in the last 100 years. We're still adding people. So I, I see a lot of, not extreme deficiencies, but I mean, if you tie this up too tight, you guys might want to pick where we're going to go. Because I mean, we're eight years away on PG&E for any of these big projects, I believe. 10 to 12 on the wind. And I don't know where we're going to put the employees of these businesses that are coming in. I'm, I'm, I mean, I think it all sounds great, but in all honesty, Humboldt's kind of special because we've lost a lot of point sources since 1990. We're really, really clean now. Our air quality is, majority of the particulate in it is sea salts. I'm, I'm just telling you, just because we've done a really good job, do we want to financially curtail ourselves and everything else? Or can we gradually keep going the way we're going and, and, and set up some more, you know, realistic goals for us? Because, like I said before, we have two power generation stations in Humboldt County for multiple vehicles that are not connected to the grid because they can't be. That's just eight cars, four, I think it's four on each one, so I don't know.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Director Ford, while you were saying that was, I think it was.
I actually wanted to make a comment to Rex.
Okay, I was just, Director Ford, did you get whatever you were trying to?
He's.
Well, while you're doing that, we'll go to Supervisor Bushnell. We still don't have an actual motion.
He's trying to work on it. I was wondering, does the rural portion of the living address the three-mile radius from, wouldn't that address that?
But, yeah, I'm just.
Yeah. No, no, I'm just, I'm just asking you what your thoughts are there.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, that's why I brought it up. The biggest thing is, is none of that's in here. He's, and we're not going to put that all into motion, and then we're going to work it through and think people.
Yeah, okay.
So do we use enough time, Director Ford?
Yes, let me send this to Nikki.
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
He's sending it to me.
Oh.
Thank you, Director Ford.
If I could, the motion would be to approve the staff recommendation to begin preparation of the IR based upon the existing draft cap with direction to refine the cap and use the EIR to address the following. One, the cap needs to address the complexities of rural living and not preclude development or maintenance of property. Two, evaluate the benefits of carbon credits and carbon offsets. Three, the EIR needs to evaluate inclusion of industrial point source emissions. There needs to be a strong explanation of why it should or should not be included within the cap. Four, need to address the inadequacies of the PG&E electrical grid with, and provide contingencies if the grid cannot be improved or improvement is delayed. Five, need to coordinate cap with other regional plans. Six, need to met, to the maximum extent feasible, need to incentivize exceeding the expectations of the cap.
Thank you. That would be my motion.
And Nikki's got it in writing.
Director Ford.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. So do we have further discussion on this? Are we ready to vote? And then have, look forward to hearing, hearing back. Sure. Supervisor Bushnell.
I would just like to, Michael, I really want to say how much I appreciate you and Director Ford coming to my district when concerns arose and to, for addressing those. You guys took the time as long as they wanted, as the people wanted, and I so appreciate that. Additionally, you know, you, you get beat up a little bit and people are just, you know, there's a lot of emotion. And I just really want to say thank you for addressing the concerns of the people in my district.
I'd like to second that emotion.
All right. I think I, our little vote tab is up.
So Director Ford, the only other thing is, are they, are you going to report back? Do we include that or?
Or is it? He probably won't, but staff will.
Staff, you said staff in there, yeah.
Yeah, staff, staff will continue to provide updates to the, the board as, as we move forward with, into the EIR and then also in developing additional language.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
All right. All right, it passed 4-0. Supervisor Wilson absent. I think we're into the public hearing now. Does that, well, thank you, thank you, Michael, for being here. And I think, Director Ford, you get to stay for this next, oh, and Michael, too. All right, cool. Let's see, so our next item is our public hearing, comes to us from Planning and Building Department, and it's regarding safe parking and the shelter pilot program. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Consider it open. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to see if the ordinance had enough in the title that.
We discussed that earlier because I.
Perfect, thank you. So we have Mary Milner here with us to give us a brief presentation on that. As she begins, one of the things I just want to emphasize that this is, and you, you said it already, Chair, this is a pilot program. It's for 18 months. So there, there may be some things associated with this that are of concern, and we recognize that there have been concerns articulated. But we are looking at this as a program to really see how things can function and to allow us then to take a look at what a more permanent ordinance would be based upon the expense, the experience over the first 18 months. So with that, Ms. Milner, are you ready to present?
I am ready. I can share my screen. Not sure if this is, am I, is that showing?
Yes.
It's sharing, but it's the, it's not the presentation, it's kind of.
Okay, how's that?
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Good afternoon, supervisors and members of the public. Mary Milner here with Long Range Planning to talk about the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter So actually, we have two ordinances. One is the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter, and the other companion is the Shelter Crisis Ordinance. So as Director Ford introduced, the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter is an 18-month pilot program, and it's renewable at the end of 18 months by the Board of Supervisors. What it does is provides a safe place to sleep for those experiencing homelessness with or without a vehicle. The second item, the Shelter Crisis Ordinance, is necessary to meet state law in order for us to use the Shelter Crisis Act. And what it does is it applies emergency housing standards in Appendix O and X, which we will also be recommending adoption. And this, the Shelter Crisis Ordinance has to do with special allowances on publicly-owned or leased land. So safe parking, safe shelter sites that were on public land would have special allowances. In order to give potential developers flexibility to adapt to their locations, which in many cases might be away from urban areas, we have proposed two pilot types. And this is to make it easier to adapt to the geography, the staffing levels of the pilot operators, and their funding sources, which will also impact what they can afford to do. So the first model is, we're calling Safe Parking because it accommodates vehicles, vans, or RVs. And the type of vehicles to be accommodated is chosen by the service provider. The second pilot type is, we're calling Safe Shelter. And these are non-vehicle types of shelters, which would be tents, cabins, or other approved structures. And that's where the Appendix O and X building codes come in. So for this pilot program, or for this, yeah, for this pilot program, the sites are operated by providers that are either a government entity, a nonprofit organization, or a religious organization. On-site staff are required during all the hours of operation. The ordinance requires a management plan and specifies objective standards. So we have identified three pre-approved management plans that were developed in coordination with the Department of Health and Human Services and local service providers to help potential pilot operators identify their own best practices, while also incorporating requirements of the ordinance. The three plans are, looking from left to right on the chart, the minimal requirements model, the village model, and the low barrier model. The management plan's shown here, increase in complexity in service level, required staff, and operating costs from left to right. The idea is to make this, these pilots available to a variety of different providers with a variety of different resources in different locations. So regardless of which plan is chosen, each provider must adhere to its management plan. And the plan's a written document that's on file with the planning department, as well as posted at the site. So the Shelter Crisis Ordinance comes into play for pilot sites located on publicly-owned or publicly leased lands. I understand it's common practice for the government entity to lease the, the, the shelter property for a dollar a year or some nominal fee in order to take advantage of this. Under the Shelter Crisis Act, these sites are entitled to certain benefits during the shelter crisis, and those are waived liability for the public entity, waiving of a secret review, the fact that public facilities can be used as shelters, relaxing certain codes, and Special Occupancy Parks Act and other laws may be suspended. So while the pilot program, the shelter, the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter is designed to work with or without the Shelter Crisis Act, in other words, on private or public property, using county-owned or leased land for the pilots would have significant benefits. So that concludes my presentation, and I will be able to answer any questions you have at this time.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Supervisor Bushnell, or Supervisor Madron. Do you want to get closer so I can see?
So, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. As I understand it, by state law, we were required to have this quite a while ago. So we have to do something. And that's based on the fact that we have an emergency shelter declaration. And it required us to have this plan, I think, well, how long ago were we supposed to have had it? supposed to have had it? A year ago, a year and a half?
I think 2020.
2020, right, so two years, two and a half years ago. So I appreciate the work of staff to bring this forward, and I don't think anybody would argue that there isn't a really desperate need for providing some sort of safe shelters out there in the community, I know I get a lot of questions all the time, what are you going to do about it, I'm sure we all do. It's also important to recognize that, right now, we aren't providing a lot of this, and according to the sheriff, we're spending $60,000 a year, according to the state, we're spending $100,000 a year per homeless person. That's on hospital visits, ER visits, cleanups, jail time, this, that, you name it, all the various costs that are associated with homelessness. So we're already spending a massive amount of money, and that money's not actually being spent on a solution, it's more on the reaction, or the outcome of not having safe parking areas or sanctioned camps. I know it's really complicated, I mean, you know, when I think about this issue, I always think there's three primary things, one is funding, to do something, and right now, we're seeing a surge in funding, so this is a great opportunity for us to be bringing forth something, even if it's temporary, even if it's only 18 months, to do something, because we're required by law to do something, but also, there is a great need out there, I mean, I can't even imagine trying to survive out in the woods, or in my car, frankly, and, and just to have a safe place to park my car would be amazing, really, to do that. So, one is funding, two is nonprofit partners to step up and work with the HHS, and we've got some great ones, I mean, Betty Chen, Supervisor Bone talks about her programs all the time, they're incredible, I mean, she and her, her folks do amazing work, we've got Arcata House Partnership, we've now got Cooperation Humboldt, there's AHA, we've got some great providers, we've got an amazing group of people that are volunteers, one of them sitting in the back of the room with our Homelessness Solutions Committee, people working tirelessly, you know, to figure out solutions, and then the third thing is location, so money, partners, location, and location's probably the hardest part. Partners has been hard, but I think we, as a county, can do better to get more partners by making sure that our nonprofit partners can get advances where appropriate, within limits, as well as prompt return on payments, so that they can manage the cash flow in helping us, the county, solve our problems. So I think we can do a lot better at supporting our nonprofit partners, and in doing so, we'll have more partners step up, because I know that's a huge barrier, I mean, Arcata House Partnership and others, we're like, I'm not sure if I want to step up and do another big program, because I'm not getting paid for 90 days, or 120 days, or whatever it might be, and cash flow's a nightmare for these kinds of things. So, the funding's there, partners are there, we can do better with our partners, and then location, and on location, you know, one of the things I talk with in my community is, all right, we already have a lot of folks experiencing housing insecurity all over the community, you know, anywhere there's a wooded area in your community where they can shelter, or just on the backside of abandoned buildings like the Ray's Shopping Center in McKinleyville, there's a lot of people that are all around that facility every night, and in the parking lot, parking and sleeping near cars, right, while the whole place is vacant. So I've often wondered, well, if you've already got those things happening in your neighborhood, wouldn't it be better if we established some sort of a safer, more secure, more managed facility, even if it's still in your neighborhood? Wouldn't that be better than what is currently happening? And my approach there is to try and say, I know it's not perfect, I know that people have a lot of very legitimate concerns, many of them are in the staff report that were brought up at the Planning Commission, about security, about what about when it's full with 20 people already, somebody parks on the street, there's lots of concerns, lots of issues, but for me, doing something is so much better than what we're doing now, which is basically not a whole lot, and it wouldn't be perfect for neighborhoods, but it certainly, it seems to me, would be better than what's currently occurring. So I, I'm very pleased that staff have brought this forward, and I want to see us do something. I like what's been laid out here, but I want to hear from my colleagues, you know, what their thoughts are on all this, as well as members of the public that may chime in here in a few minutes. So thank you for the work, let's do something, it's overdue, we're required by law to do something, so what does that look like, that's the question. I also wish that we were allowing for these to occur on private land, we've talked about this, there are some great examples in our community of private property owners who are trying to do some of these things, one of them's in Southern Humboldt, you know, Dottie Russell and others, and we can disagree about this, that, or whatever, and code enforcement, but she has a big heart, on many levels, from what I can tell, and she really works hard to try and provide affordable opportunities for people. In my part of the county, I've got Yee-Haw, yeah, it's not perfect, there's some issues there, but here you have a landowner who's absolutely provided amazing housing opportunities, or TPs, tents, yurts, et cetera, buses, to get people off the streets, and while it may seem in the rural area, actually, it's only about a half mile down into town to the bus, to the store, to the laundromat, et cetera. So I, I really wish that we could include private property where we have cooperative landowners, and I'm not sure why that isn't in here, because we talked about this during the development of this, I spoke about this at the Homelessness Solutions Committee with, with Mary and others, that, so that's one of the missing pieces, I think, here, because I think we need to look at all the opportunities, and to only focus on those commercial zones or industrial zones, isn't going to get us there, there is a need far greater than that, and I think we need to engage the private sector in a better way. So those are my comments at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So John, this ordinance, or Director Ford, I'm sorry, it doesn't address private property?
At the current time, it limits it to be either operated by a government or a nonprofit, and it can be done on private property, but it has to be done basically by an organization that's dedicated to providing this kind of service.
So they could work under an umbrella?
Yeah.
And that, I think that, I read that, so I have a few questions, first, I would like to thank, it's Mary, right, I haven't met her?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary, and yours, whoever helped you work on this, and staff. My, one of my questions is, it says enforcement in here, that would be part of it, and what does, can you explain to me what enforcement looks like, and who would do that, and how much additional, I'm assuming code enforcement, and how much additional pressure that would put on staff to make sure that people are complying?
I can take that, let me first quickly address the private property issue, if I could. This is made to operate on private as well as public property, it's just that if you do it on private property, the bells and whistles, some of the bells and whistles of the Shelter Crisis Act don't kick in, in other words, it's set up as an emergency shelter, the ordinance operates independent of shelter crisis, so you can do this on a private, private land.
Thank you for that, because I had understood that it was, it did include private lands, and that it didn't have to be under a nonprofit, I'm sorry, I read it different.
Yeah, well, actually, it still needs to have one of those operators, either a government, nonprofit, or religious, so it's, can be a private person, it has to be an organization, but the land itself can be owned either publicly or privately, hopefully that clarifies.
It does, thank you.
Okay. And then, your next question was about enforcement, the way it will work is, the operator, the person operating the site, the organization, will have to, they have an operating plan, and in that operating, operating plan are some rules, basically, for the site, rules of engagement, there's an agreement with people that are at the site, the people that are there are basically listed and limited in number, so people just don't come and go, so there's kind of an agreement, and once you go, if, if a party violates that agreement, then the first line of defense is the operator of the site, they would be able to ask people to, to leave, and then after that, if any other, say, there was a code enforcement issue or a nuisance issue, that would be code enforcement, other things may come up that would involve the sheriff, but the first line is going to be the operator of the site.
So thank you, my concern is, we have a lot of people in the communities throughout Humboldt County that are very empathetic and sympathetic to situations, and they want to help, and sometimes, it doesn't work out as they see, and problems arise in those communities, so I, I want to specifically ask, if you have an operator on private lands that is doing this, and you get a complaint from neighboring or surrounding people, what do you do then?
So I'll take a shot at this, Mary, the ordinance identifies that the first thing to be done would be that the permit would be revoked, and, and so if that, or the ZCC, actually, and in some cases, it'd be a conditional use permit. If those were revoked, then the site would need to be cleaned up by the property owner or the operator, and I, I think Mary's right there, and that's the first line, is the operator would need to clean it up, the struggle that, obviously, I think what you're getting at, is that there may be some people who don't have resources, or inclination, or whatever it is, to clean up a mess, once it's made, and then what would happen? And that really would qualify as a nuisance, and that would then become something, code enforcement would be the operative arm of the county, to say, hey, you're now in violation, you have a nuisance, you have trash, garbage, whatever it is on the property, and that needs to be cleaned up, and if they don't clean it up, then we would be in a place of, of having to take more severe action, and we've seen what that looks like in some of the more extreme cases.
Thank you for that, so, my fear is that we create a bigger problem in certain areas, and that we, in 18 months, decide that this isn't now working on private lands, and so we, we pull back that pilot program, and then we've created things now that have to be dealt with, that landowners don't have the feasibility financially to deal with, and that really scares me, especially in rural, rural settings, I, you know, we struggle right now to clean up areas that need them, and it takes a long time, and I don't want, and while I do love the thought of this program, very much, and I do want people to have a place to be, it's so important, it's not, it's so uncomfortable to be homeless or houseless, even to have a vehicle and not have to have a safe area, I think that we need to be very careful about creating additional problems, and, and that, that, those additional problems then go on to residential people that have to, you know, bear the consequence of that. So I'm wondering, through this ordinance, if we can maybe identify places that are maybe more appropriate, such as churches, or, so we can already do public, some public lands, when I spoke with the HHS this morning, and I believe Connie's on, so they have abilities on public lands to help with, say, bathrooms, and such, but they don't, I think Connie's on here, have that ability on the private lands to help with financing or financial means, so if I, Connie, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can you?
Sure, with the, with the current funding that we have available, we would need to lease the private property in order for us to fund it, we couldn't, we couldn't fund it at this point, with the funding that we have, so a private entity would have to come up with their own funds to support a project that's private.
Supervisor Bone?
Connie, and by a private, I, we can have a, a nonprofit contractor come in and handle this on private land, and still be available for funding, though, right?
I think the criteria would, would be that we would need to lease the property, with the funding that we have currently available.
No, but what I'm saying is, if, maybe not necessarily a church, but maybe necessarily a church has an extra parking lot, and wants to do this, and oversee it, as their nonprofit, would we not be able to help in that in any way?
If we lease the property, then all ADA and, and all county requirements would come into play. That's, that's going to be part of the problem.
Because I'm going back here now, but, so this isn't for emergency, is ADA and everything going to be required for all these safe parking lots?
No.
So why would we want to lease them, why wouldn't we just let them do them on their, their parking lot, and pay them for the services, or contract the services?
I, I believe that the, the shelter ordinance and criteria is different than the funding that's currently available through HCD in the state, that, that's the issue here. I think Planning and Building's done a wonderful job making this project really broad, so there were a lot of options, and the funding that's available through the HHHC has some pretty strict criteria.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, Connie, so, Director Ford, I'm wondering, I just don't want to create more problems, although I want, I want this to work, and I, I'm fearful that it's going to create more problems on private lands, where funding is not available to people, and so, you know, even to, to rent a porta potty is $100 to $200 a month, and one services 10 people for one week, so, and they don't, the only porta potty service only comes to Southern Humboldt every other week, so I'm, I'm just concerned, and wanted to know if there's some way we could identify possibly, maybe church sites, appropriate, I, I don't know, I'm just concerned.
So, I, we understand the concern, and frankly, internally, within the department, there were a lot of concerns expressed, and, and Michael got beat up by his own peers about this, in a long time. But the thing that needs to be thought about here, I think, is, is, is the trade-off of what's going on, I think Supervisor Madrone, on this point, was exactly right, that this is happening right now, anyway, in an uncontrolled way, what we're trying to do is have it done, be done in a controlled way. One of the logic pieces that may be being missed here, that we really should look at, is that the ordinance does identify zones that it's allowed, and as Supervisor Madrone said, it's not as inclusive enough, but part of the reason of that is to limit where these things can happen, so that they're not back in neighborhoods and in places that would create significant adverse impacts, so they're in locations that aren't as sensitive, and that does include churches, and it does include churches outside of the identified zones, but that is a conditional use permit, and the reason for that is it's moving into a more sensitive area. Secondly, the wisdom of the nonprofits, religious organizations, or some, or, and those, that requirement, is that those are people who typically have a vested interest and a financial interest in caring for people who are homeless and, and indigent, and so they come in then with the wherewithal to provide these services, have the organization to provide the services, have the interest to provide the services, they're not doing it for remuneration, they're doing it because they truly want to help, and they have the resources to clean it up, if that needs to be done. Third, within the requirements for the, the different plans that need to be submitted, there is a requirement in each of those, that the sites need to be cleaned up, and maybe that's something that the board wants to see, a little bit stronger language in terms of the ordinance, is that, you know, it, it is a requirement that within 10 days, that the sites be completely cleaned up, once the use stops, or if the ZCC or permit is revoked, and, and, and that certainly would, would be. And that certainly would be something that would be appropriate, to ensure that there's no lingering after-effects of an activity that was there.
So, I think that's a really good idea. I want to go along the lines with what you said, that it is the people that care that are doing this. And with that statement, it's really hard to turn away people, you have your limit of 15 or 20, "Oh, okay, just for tonight." And that concerns me, because I would do it. I know that I would do it. And so, I'm wondering if, and I want this to work, definitely, is there any reporting requirements in this ordinance? And if there are not, maybe could we have them report monthly on the status of their site?
There's currently not, but we could certainly add that in.
Through the chair, maybe I can add a couple things. There is reporting, it's not monthly, though. I think it's annually. And the other thing I wanted to insert is that each of the management plans requires enough porta potties, it requires enclosed garbage that gets emptied. So, the operators are required to maintain the site. So, hopefully, I mean, if it's actually working according to the plan that they're required to follow, there wouldn't be a huge mess at the end of things.
I appreciate that, Mary. However, things get away from us quite easily, and we're a large county, and I want to try to do some preventative measures before, so that it can work, so that we don't have a problem at the end, and hopefully, that the program can go on longer than the 18 months. I would love to see reporting once a month. Annually is not enough for me to feel comfortable.
I do think Supervisor Madron had comments you wanted to make, and I had a couple questions. Okay. Well, I was going to add, go ahead.
I was worried, because John said we needed strong language for this ordinance to house homeless people. I wish we could get there easier, and I don't want to hear that, you know, I know we have to live by reality, but we don't have the funding, we don't have the funding. Some of this stuff, we're going to have to try, and I know we've done, like you said, there's, I've been fortunate, or unfortunate enough, to work with a few of these agencies, private agencies, and know what the private industry can do compared to. So, there seems to be a little more passion. And with that, I think there's a whole bunch of people that want to see that happen elsewhere. So, I don't know, I guess we want strong language, but we need this to work. It's kind of like everything else we're facing. We're putting so many restrictions on it. This is why we see people having a housing shortage. So, I don't know how we'd make it easier, and still meet all the guidelines of, you know, sanitary, you know, environment and everything else. But, the nonprofit sector always seems to catch up pretty quick, before we do.
What I was, thank you Supervisor Bone, I sure would like to see more frequent reporting. I mean, I know we get those from Betty, and I know that it's hard on people, but if we do it yearly, we're going to have a year pass before we hear how it's really working, and then there's six months left of the program. It'd be nice to find a way that we could have something that more frequent, perhaps not formal, I don't know. Yeah, something so we know, you know, how many people are there, what's, how it's been going. I also just encourage anyone who is opening one, and I don't think I saw this in there, but it's been a long meeting. I would like, you know, neighborhood properties and property owners to be reached out to, to be part of kind of the eyes in the neighborhood when things aren't going wrong, if there are. It's like, I don't want the operators operating like they're on an island somewhere, nobody else, nobody else matters. So, it's like, trying to get them to just be cognizant that working with others around them is going to be really important.
I think, I mean, for myself, I get those phone calls as the supervisor immediately. So, that also is where my concern is. I, and I want to agree with Rex, that the types of people that are doing this work are passionate about it, and so, I don't want to make it harder, definitely want the program to work. I just don't want us to say in 18 months, "Oh, shoot." And that we didn't put enough, just some little checkpoints that could assure us, or make us know that we're, you know, in the right, it's a pilot program, right? That means we want to make it successful. And any way that we can ensure that, without putting too much restraints on it, I encourage.
Okay. Supervisor Bone, and then we do have public comment, we haven't done yet.
And as the reporting goes, I mean, it was, we got, I got some things from Connie Beck at DHHS the other day, about all the housing. And there's a lot of people at DHHS that are just as passionate about this. I don't want to, I don't want to make it sound like just the private sector, because there's a lot of people at DHHS that are extremely passionate about it. But, because they've, I mean, I think she probably sent it to all of us. I mean, we have quite a few rooms coming available in Arcata with the two hotels, we have the Humboldt House. We've been, they've been doing a really good job at finding places as we move along. And as we do these motels, we're finding out that the motels, the per-room cost on the motels is 25, 30% of what a new build is. So, that's, it's kind of nice, so. So, I appreciate everybody that's over there, and the people that are working on the projects.
All right. Well, I will go to public comment now, since we're here. I know we have one member in person who submitted comments, but may want to speak for three minutes. And if you're listening, and you wish to make comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I did want to acknowledge that we received a lot of communications about this, and I think we all probably received some of the same ones. So...
Excuse me, Chair Bass, sorry about that. Connie has her hand up.
Okay, I can't see hands up on here, thanks.
Right. Go ahead, Connie.
I just thought that I would say, you know, if the projects are being funded through the DHHS funding, or HHHC, then there are reporting requirements, and we could report to your board more often on all of the funding. And we actually get it as invoices are coming in, so if that's something that you would like to see in this project, we could definitely do that.
Yeah, I think, I, thank you, Connie, or Director Beck. I think Supervisor Bushnell wasn't so much worried about the county ones, as by others. So, Supervisor Bushnell, did you want to, like, clarify that?
Thank you, Connie. I know that you guys are mandated so much with reporting. I think that this is such a new program for private, that it could be helpful for them to submit a report, simple. "I had this many people this many days, and my toilets were emptied twice," whatever. And that we could offer them feedback, you know, to make sure they're within the ordinance, because it's brand-new, it's a pilot program. It's usually how things work, you know? And just to also be able to maybe reach out and say, "Great, great, great job, it looks like it's working." It would also, for the pilot program, in 18 months, we can use those reports to say, "It worked well, and maybe we should continue forward with this as not a pilot program, but as an ordinance."
All right, thank you. So, now I will go to public comment. Is there anyone here that wanted to come up and speak, their three minutes? And we have one on, we'll go to the phones next. Welcome, Janelle.
Let's see, where's my time starting? Trying to get my thoughts together. I guess, I just need to say that it's a disappointment that this is just the overnight. I was at the sleeping sites, and then you had the sleeping sites for, I don't know what it was, six, seven months. And just, the difference between a sleeping site and a place to live, I don't know, I don't know how to explain that to you. I mean, you're going to have people that, they have to tell these people to leave every day? It's just, I wouldn't want to do it. I'm sorry. I was at the sleeping sites. I would not do this. And that's as much, I don't know what else I can say. I just, for, you know, it's, it's not a place to live. And it's not, I don't think it'd be that much more expensive to have it 24/7. I just really don't. And I think it would be world of a difference. I just, the sleeping site, I'm just absolutely opposed to it. I don't know how else to say. I mean, I was there, I watched what happened. And they were not the horrible, and I don't want to say that, the things that I'm hearing about, it wasn't the horrible that it was, you know, the police report thing was overblown, way overblown. I asked for the records. They didn't have the, I saw, they used a report, a citywide report, to report that there was a crime wave. And I got the map that showed, and the crime was not happening around the sleeping sites. The garbage was, part of the problem was, the people didn't know when the garbage needed to be picked up. And so, they camped in front of the garbage thing, and then the garbage truck couldn't get to it. It was more that it needed to be managed, and not just a free-for-all type of situation. I just, and I'm not saying that this will become a free-for-all situation, but I'm just saying that to do it for just nighttime, just doesn't make any sense to me. And I, I wish I could say something wonderful about it. I'm glad that the county is doing something. There, I said something positive. But, I just, for a number of reasons, you know? And there, again, in terms of funding, there is some funding right now that is coming, that is, there's a report being for it. And I don't know what this county is doing for theirs, but it funds this, it would fund a camp. It is intended to fund something like this. And that type of funding is going away, because the focus is on housing, and it should be. But, when there's funding right now, to do something for people right now, that money should be used for that. Sorry.
All right, thank you, Janelle. So, we'll now go to those on the phone. And 0896 is the only number we have up at this moment, so 0896, press star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Jan Turner. I live in Freshwater, and I really commend the county for taking this up, and I hope you will pass it. I'm, I think some of the concerns that are being expressed, I haven't read every part of this yet, but it seems that what I have read, looks like a zoning ordinance, making it possible for a nonprofit, or a church, or a government entity to do this. And so, the whole private land thing is a totally different thing. And a lot of the nuisance situations we have seen have been on private land, where landlords are renting substandard housing and collecting rent for it. So, that, and that does end up with often a nuisance abatement. But, here we're talking about a nonprofit renting something, and you can see that, you know, the conditions as far as reporting are going to be related to what their funding is. This is a zoning ordinance. So, probably nonprofits aren't going to run out and do this with some, without some sort of funding. And if the county decides to fund them, then it would seem like that's where you would be putting the reporting requirements. I don't, you know, I just wanted to say, I did, I was very impressed with Betty Chin's temporary parking lot shelter she did with the storage containers, or whatever they call those, shipping containers. And when I see nonprofits running things, you can't even tell, a lot of times, that that's what's going on there. They're very well-run, you know, I'm thinking about the place over by Target, which was so controversial. And you really can't even tell it's, you know, now I think it's a treatment program, but whatever. You could, when it was a homeless shelter, you really couldn't tell. And so, that's, I would encourage the board to pass the ordinance. It's not the only piece of the puzzle, and it's not the last piece of the puzzle, but it allows the county to move forward on one part of it, or nonprofits to take the first step in being able to do something relating to a parking lot shelter by allowing it in the zoning.
All right. Oops, thank you, Jan.
Chair Bass, we do have one more caller that added, it's call-in user one.
Okay, call-in user one. Just press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Hello, yes, welcome.
Hi, this is Nessie Wade calling, about the safe parking, safe shelter ordinance. I'm listening to all the commentary. I think I would really just like to say, as a part of a nonprofit that's very interested in seeing these notions, these ordinances and zoning advanced, to open up the possibilities of partnerships that might bring on more possibilities for folks that are now without safe places to be. I am a little concerned when I hear, you know, the limitations, that it's, you've got to have this kind of funding, or it can only be this way, or what happens if it's in a private landowner situation. I agree with, there's going to be a lot of questions. If you go through all of the nuances of these ordinances, there will be many things that need to get worked out. The time limit, you know, for each of the management plans, or for the 18-month sunsetting, and maybe an opportunity to do this again. People need much more time than is available in some of these restrictions. But, I'm very happy and excited to see that we are finally to the place where we have this before the public, before the board. And I have written to all of the board members, on behalf of Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives, I've also written as a private individual, to encourage you to support the ordinance, ordinances. And I think it's really important, because until such time as we have enough housing available for folks without a roof, the safe parking, safe shelter projects promise to improve and inform our best practices, and approaches to resolving homelessness. The short timeline, the limitation there for the pilots, might make them more difficult to accomplish, or be successful, since the transition for people coming out of chronic homelessness takes more than the time available. But, without an assurance of renewal, financial investment by partners, may become also more limited, if they see that as short-lived. In any case, I think we ought to move forward and open up these opportunities. We will have lots to work out in the interim. I applaud the planners, and those who have worked so hard to contribute information to making this possible. There's a lot of things that we could spend time on, taking things apart, and I'm sure we will, when we get to the place of actually applying for projects. I just really think that we need to be flexible. We want to see this work, and yes, you have to trust, you have to trust that people who are taking on a responsibility can manage that, and be willing to work with us. We're going to be willing to work with everyone to make it happen. I think the way that we can do that is through collaboration, that's the only way.
All right, thank you, thank you, Nessie, sorry. Three minutes for everyone. If you are, we do have a couple more hands up. I just want to remind people that, once you put your hand up, to turn the volume off on your video feed, because there is a significant time delay. So, we have 8336. Press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, welcome.
So, my name is Elaine Johnson, and I'm speaking in support of the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter Ordinance. I love what Nessie Wade just said, and I, you know, want to, you know, throw all my support to what she just said, everything she said was just golden. My focus today is on sleep, and the importance of sleep, and even though I would prefer more than the time limit each night given, this is a pilot program, things can be changed and tweaked and made improved. But, I'm so excited about this project of allowing people a safe place to sleep. You think about the homeless community, and it's our community, we interact with the homeless... We interact with the homeless in the grocery stores, on the sidewalk, parks, everywhere. The homeless community is diverse, and it is us. And you think about homeless community as us? Well, yes, because homelessness is unexpected. It's sudden, and sometimes it happens to us. And being homeless is difficult to understand, difficult to look at, difficult to imagine. And why is it difficult? Because no one wants to be homeless. So why do we not want to be homeless? All we got to do is think about one of our favorite pastimes, and that's camping. And, you know, there's this romantic ideal about camping, and we're all back to nature, and where we could rejuvenate or restore and rest and recharge before returning to the work world. But you think about homelessness, and that's not camping. That's not romanticized. That is camping without a campsite, and it's terrible. I was homeless for one month back in my teens. I'm now in my 60s, and I'll never forget the experience. The idea of sleep, this shelter will address, and lots of scientific studies in the last few years talk about sleep. Maslow's hierarchy of needs focused on food, water, shelter. We now definitely add sleep to basic survival skills. Lack of sleep will affect hunger. The less sleep we get, the more hungry we get, the more hungry, the more we eat, the more obese we get. Lack of sleep affects our brain function, concentration, focus, reaction time, thinking. Makes us vulnerable to disease. Lack of sleep affects our immune system. The more you sleep, the more you can problem-solve your way out of problems. Problems like unwanted.
Oops, sorry. Thank you, the three-minute timer has ran out, but thank you very much for calling. And 6212, press star six to unmute, and a reminder that it is three minutes for the time limit.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name is Deborah, and I'm excited to have this on the agenda today, and I want to thank everybody that's worked very, very hard to, to put this here. And I would ask that the board please to pass this safe parking and safe shelter pilot program and the shelter crisis ordinance. This is very exciting for us in Humboldt County. We need a place for people to be stabilized, and this is a start. I know that there's a lot of fear, and there's a lot of questions, but it's not working, what we're doing right now. So I ask that you just please pass this, and we can work it out. I, I just think that this is a great start for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we will go back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell? I saw her hand. Did you speak? Supervisor Madron?
I appreciate the, the public comments, and my apologies for not having caught that on the private stuff. I appreciate that being included. I think I was going off the PowerPoint where it said "public lands" and "leased lands." But at any rate, glad to have the clarification as I read more deeply into it. Clearly does allow for it on, on private land, so I appreciate that. And sometimes, you know, there are private landowners who don't even need a grant or any money at all. They just are willing to provide a, a safe place and, and make that happen. That's actually our cheapest option, by a long shot, as long as it's run well and responsibly and doesn't get out of control. So it's still important to have those requirements. Before Supervisor Wilson left, he shared with myself and CIO Hayes that he's supportive of the ordinance. Obviously, he can't vote, he's not here, but he did ask us to, or asked me to share that with the rest of the board. I'm supportive of this ordinance, and I would be willing to make a motion to, to support staff recommendation with one change, and that is that I would add AG as one of the allowed sites. Is there a problem with doing that? I think that, you know, there was talk about, let's not do this in residential neighborhoods. Well, so where do you do it? Commercial lands, industrial lands? Well, what about AG? I mean, it's a temporary use of the land. It's not a permanent use of that land. Much of the AG in the county is actually forested land. You think it's all prairie, but actually, a lot of the AG in the county is, it's really a mix. Some of it's meadowlands, and some of it's forestlands. It's not consistent. But I just, I want to try and provide maximum flexibility. I agree that 18 months is a short time period, but I, I agree with the speakers and others that have talked about, let's get something going. And we've been required by law to do this for some time, so I'm, I think I see support here for doing something and moving this forward. I also think that, you know, it's my understanding, reading through the ordinances more deeply, that there is allowance for 24/7. It really depends on the site conditions and the partners and their capabilities. So it can be safe parking that you need to leave in the morning, or even a camp. But of course, if people setting up tents and all that kind of stuff, it really needs to be 24/7. Otherwise, I mean, what a nightmare. You're already, you know, in a bad place, and now you got to pack everything up, and where do you go during the day with all that, all your gear? And people talk about how they just walk, walk, walk everywhere, and it just, not getting sleep, just everything about our current situation is horrible. So I hope we can move this forward, and that's the only change I would make right now. I agree that it's a pilot, you know? I mean, that's the way we're putting it forward, and there'll be need for adjustments and changes. Close monitoring, I think having reporting more regularly would be another change I would probably recommend in my motion, that let's have regular reporting. What does that look like? I don't know, but annually is probably not often enough. So with that, I'd keep the motion, adopt staff's recommendations, but add AG and add regular reporting to the mix.
So is there a second? And I do know I have Supervisor Bone and, and Bone and Bushnell that had comments, I believe, but Supervisor, is there a second? Okay, so we have a motion, but yes, I want to clarify something.
So I just wanted to clarify, and Director Ford or Michael, so it is 24/7. It can be, correct?
Yes.
It's not just for, for sleeping.
No, that's why there's the three different plans. Mary could explain this better.
Right.
But one is just for, for parking overnight.
Right.
But then, like she showed the, one with the, the tent cabins there, that clearly is.
I understood that also. I just want to reiterate it, because we heard several comments, so, and, and I, I do think that people need a place to be, so besides just sleeping, and it is correct, they have a lot of stuff sometimes, and so I, I do encourage more than just the overnight. I, I want to, second the motion, however, I want to be more specific on the reporting. And I think that I would look at you both for some recommendations.
Yeah. If this would please award, I would offer that section 61. Turn your mic up.
Thank you.
I was just making sure Eric's still awake.
Thank you, Eric. To section 61 dot 05 dot 5, a new provision seven that would read, "The operator shall provide monthly reports to the planning and building department and Department of Health and Human Services, identifying the number of people present each night during the month, the use and maintenance of temporary restroom facilities, and any operational concerns." Period. A new sentence, "Pictures of the site shall be included with a monthly report showing the condition of the site."
I would like that very much.
I would accept that as part of the motion, and I don't think that's a big burden. I mean, that's a pretty simple task, and it's important.
And I think for a pilot program, it's necessary for documentation if we want to go forward.
Absolutely.
The only other thing that I would like to ask is that you had mentioned that possibly we would need to put in there that within 10 days after this program ends, that the site's cleaned up. Or 30 days, whatever you think is reasonable. Would the motioner be okay with that?
30 days would be great.
Okay.
So I would, same section, add a new provision eight that would indicate that within 30 days of the end of the use, all evidence of the site shall be removed, or all evidence of the activity shall be removed.
Temporary use, that's right.
Yeah.
Are you, so I'll second that motion then.
Good job.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the ag for the one reason is, is, the reason I think we, it was set up originally in the way that a lot of them do it, is because there's services available. You can access them, you can put the portable toilets and everything else. Depending on where you go with ag, I think the, you're not going to have any pervious conditions. I mean, I, I think the, the impact's going to be a little more extreme, and the problem is, any ag of any size is going to be, you know, since we're talking about three and a half miles from downtown to do any structures or everything else, there's going to have to be services. And that's, I, I think it's great you guys added the numbers, knowing this, but we're going to be providing services at all these places, which is going to give you all the data you need on how many are in. I mean, if we, if you follow the Arcata House, or their parking program they did at the bank there and stuff like that, they kept pretty good numbers. But they were also using funds that were being provided to them, and I think with that comes reporting, so. But I just, I, I worry about putting it out on ag, just because the services aren't there, and they're farther away from the services we're provided. And I'm talking both water, power, as, as well as I am talking about the services they need to. Because you guys, we're talking about housing them. Now, a lot of these villages, like up there in Eugene and stuff, they don't, they don't necessarily move out after six months. And we're talking about housing somebody for six months, and then do we just cut them off then, or do we wait till we find them something else? Or is that provision going to be there? Because it's a six-month, you know, six-month stay on all three of the tiers that you gave us. So I'm just, at six months, where do they go?
Yeah. Well, yeah, and if you wanted to answer the part about the, the ag, I guess, and Supervisor Madron had his hand up, so. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, I would simply respond that I think Supervisor Bone is entirely correct in terms of the logic and the wisdom of where the zones are clustered. It is around services. And, and so, you know, it is a policy decision whether or not you want to expand that out into areas, but there won't be services there, and, and frankly, a lot of those areas may have more residential nature to them that people may object to that, and.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, so, I understand the concerns, but, you know, AG is actually a really diverse zoning, and it isn't just in the hinterlands. There's a lot of AG parcels that are within a mile of downtown areas in Eureka, Arcata, Fortuna, Trinidad, right near services. So really, for me, what matters, I think, is the essence of what you were saying, is that it needs to be the right site, you know? But if there is an AG parcel that is near services, then that deals with that concern, right? At some levels, maybe not all of the levels. So I, I think there's a lot of room in this ordinance to really be looking at the site specifics of any proposal, and make sure that it actually does fit, and it does work, and it doesn't create problems. You know, in the coastal zone in particular, you've got to get a zoning clearance to do it in any of these zones. It's not an automatic. It is principally permitted, but with a zoning clearance certificate. So there are processes there for that, but again, there's a lot of ag general that's right near services, frankly.
Director Ford had a, I think had a comment of that, and Supervisor Bushnell's still in line.
I'm sorry, one last thing I wanted to mention is, I actually get a lot of concerns from constituents about putting it on commercial and industrial land in the downtown area like McKinleyville, for instance. Most of the zones that are identified here, put, put these things literally right out there in, in the public spaces. And I'm getting a lot of pushback over that concept, whereas if you pick an appropriate cited AG parcel, it's not right there in the middle. And if it's within a mile of the bus stop, or the store, or whatever, why wouldn't we want to consider those options? I'm not going to die on my sword on this one by any means, but I just, let's think about the site specifics of, of this stuff, you know, and provide maximum flexibility so that we can cite them in the appropriate places.
So Director Ford, you had something you were going to add?
I, I do, and I just wanted to clarify something and then ask a question of Supervisor Madron. First is that a zoning clearance certificate is a ministerial permit associated with something that's permitted by rights, so there's really no discretion there.
We, no, but people can't attend the hearing.
There's no hearing.
Okay, I always thought zoning clearance certificates had a hearing.
No, that's something that actually, in the zoning ordinance, is intended to be issued right over the counter.
Gotcha. But there are some zoning clearance certificates that occur with cannabis at your office, or am I confused?
That's something that the director signs off on.
Certainly.
And if it, if it complies, it gets signed off on. There's, there's no discretion there.
But you have had public members attend those meetings with?
No, there's no meeting.
So I'm confused. It's a different type of meeting happening?
Yes, that'd be the special permit.
Thank you.
So then, the thing that I would ask relative to something that you just said, and understanding that zoning clearance certificates really have no discretion, would your comments then allude to the fact that if you wanted AG, that you would put some performance criteria associated with that, so that if it's within a mile of services, there's going to be some discretion there? But if it's located within a mile of services in an AG zone, it's allowed? I, I mean, something like that would at least narrow it down and, and achieve some of what we're trying to accomplish.
Oh, I'd be fine with that. I mean, I think, I am suggesting that we have some parameters associated with this. I'm just trying to provide maximum flexibility. Because of the pushback I get in the community about putting it where it currently says in this ordinance it should go, there are a whole lot of people like, no way, you're not putting it there on the Ray's parking lot, even though it makes a lot of sense, because it's vacant, and the landowner could be getting some lease money. So I don't know, you know? I think we're going to be looking at a, a broad variety of solutions that this ordinance, both ordinances will allow. And I'm fine with a performance standard like that. I would amend my motion to include that type of a condition, so.
Thank you.
We're legislating at the diocese, as Mike likes to say.
Yeah, he loved us. So is that okay with your second? And you had a comment as well.
I know, that was going to be my comment. And yes, I would prefer that.
Great.
All right, so, anyone need to, or want to hear the, the, yeah, can you read the, can you, Nikki, do you feel like you got?
Nope.
No. Director Ford, do you guys send that to Nikki?
Coming to her.
You got a look on your face.
Sorry, Nikki.
John to work here on his final, final meetings.
It's so quiet in here.
I just want to say, I do support, or appreciate the support by this board for trying to find solutions. I think we all know we got to do something, and staff have worked really hard, listening to people and trying to figure out what that looks like. And again, it's temporary, and we're going to, I'm sure there will be adjustments to all of this as we move forward to help our community.
So I keep, Director Ford's still tapping away there, so.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'll, I'll read this, and then I'll send it to Nikki. So it'd be an amendment to modify section 61 dot 05 dot, dot two applicability, and it would be a new sentence at the end that safe, safe parking locations can be within an AG zone.
Safe parking and safe camp.
And safe shelter, safe parking and safe shelter can be located within the AG zone with, when located within one mile of services. And then the second change would be.
Clarify. Clarify.
I have a clarification request.
Chair, clarify services. Are we talking social services or environmental services, or?
Well, I was thinking primarily that it would be within a mile of, of some kind of a commercial establishment where they can get food, and maybe we should just identify that with.
I mean, definitely that most, some of them could, most of them are not going to have cars, and they need to be able to walk to, to get food and to get services. And I, I think we should identify that, yes.
Okay, so with, rather than saying within services, we'll say within a mile of areas where they can obtain food and, and transportation.
Sustainable services for living.
Sustainable services for living. Then mod- Then modify section 6.1.05.5, a new provision number seven. This is what I read previously. "The operator shall provide monthly reports to the Planning and Building Department, Department of Health and Human Services, identifying the number of people present each night during the month, the use and maintenance of temporary restroom facilities, and any operational concerns. Pictures of the site shall be included with the monthly report showing the condition of the site." And then, a new provision to 6.1.05.5, number eight, "Within 30 days of the end of the use, all elements associated with the temporary use shall be removed."
Okay. We've got the nodding heads. Any other comments to be made here before we vote? Sounds like we're ready to vote then.
I think Mary's still on, and I just want to thank you also for all your work.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, guys.
The voice in the sky.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so we have had our, this is like the first time we've actually had these, it worked all the time so far. All right, passes, fours, four yes, zero no's, one, well, one supervisor missing. So we are now closing this public hearing. And we're going to go back into closed session. And then, any estimates on when we might come out and to report, or just, it's going to happen when it happens? Because I need at least a five-minute break. I still haven't eaten the lunch yet. I haven't started in there.
Chair Bass, I'm really hopeful that you all can get through the last two items in a half hour.
So that means like an hour. No, I'm sorry.
Gauging how much you would like to talk is always like playing the Lotto.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go back into closed session. All right. Excuse me. I don't want to go without him, but I think we can probably go without Supervisor Madron. Maybe we have a report out of closed session?
Thank you, Chair Bass. With regard to items K2, K3, K5, and K7 through K9, there was no reportable action taken at today's closed session. With regard to item K4, the board voted four to one, with Supervisor Madron voting yes, Supervisor Wilson voting yes, Chair Bass voting yes, Supervisor Bone voting yes, and Supervisor Bushnell voting no, to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the case of Eric James Adams versus Honorado Olguen Quisp et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2200236. And with regard to item K6, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the case of Beverly Elaine Steichen versus Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2101594.
All right, and thank you, and with that, we're adjourned.